Meeting to order. Sarah?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
John?
Here.
Nathan is here. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three, the consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item 5E.
5E is being stricken from the agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Agenda item four, public input. This is the time and place for discussion items not already on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. Would anyone like to participate in public input? Okay. Moving on to 5A, discussion regarding proclamation for COVID-19 prevention initiative. And I've updated these numbers today. Whereas countries around the globe have experienced the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic with over 23.39 million confirmed cases and 808,377 deaths. And whereas the United States has over 5.7 million cases and 176,000 deaths. And whereas Iowa has over 56,446 cases and 1,036 deaths. And whereas Lynn County has over 2,745 cases and 91 deaths. And whereas the number of COVID-19 cases continue to increase in our nation, state, and county, placing our residents at risk for serious illness or death. And whereas the World Health Organization has determined that wearing face shields or cloth face masks have proven to be one of the most effective means to curb the spread of COVID-19 virus among persons in public settings. And whereas it is critically important to protect the residents, visitors, students, and employees in the city of Lisbon from the spread of COVID-19. And whereas the city of Lisbon and mayor desire that individuals and businesses in the city comply with recommended practices to reduce the virus spread, including social distancing and the use of face shields or cloth face masks. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Nathan Smith, Mayor pro tem of Lisbon, proclaim the COVID-19 prevention initiative in Lisbon and request that everyone socially distance and wear face shields or cloth face masks when they are in proximity of other persons, both in public as well as private locations, and that these practices continue indefinitely until substantial progress in curbing the spread of the COVID-19 virus has been declared by public health officials. Signed to this 24th day of August, 2020. Thank you. 5B, discussion and possible action awarding, regarding awarding bid on 2008 Silverado 1500. We only received one bid?
Just one bid for one of the vehicles. Remember, we had two vehicles out and we just got the bid on the one.
Okay.
We're gonna put parts the rest, the other one, scrap.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for the selling of it to Ed Clark for $500.
And I called Ed and told him, okay, he was the low bidder and the council would have to do this Monday.
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Roll call, Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
5C, discussion and possible action regarding firearms range 28E agreement with the Anamos Estate Penitentiary. This was in our packet. This is a, just a simple 2080 agreement to...
Let's, our guys use the range there and whatnot, it's a good deal.
All right. I make a motion to approve the 2080 agreement, firearms range agreement. Is that a second? I have a second. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan? All right. 5D, discussion and possible action for downtown reinvestment grant application from Casey and Luke Crawl. This was also in our packet is the...
They did the painting.
Correct.
And now they're just looking for reimbursement back from the grant that they have. So I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve the reimbursement.
I second.
Sarah will second. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
We're skipping 5E.
Excuse me, Nate, don't be all right, it's here, so you might...
Oh!
Oh!
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's my fault. It should have gone to Historic Preservation Commission first and I missed that step. They should have looked at it first and then... So it was my fault. Missed, I'm still picking up some things, learning. So Connie invited me again and I needed to do that and I just forgot about it. So I apologize.
It'll be on the next...
Yeah, we'll get it on the next. I'll get it with them and get them approved and I'll get it back on the real set.
All right, thank you. Moving on to 5F, discussion and possible action regarding EC cog comprehensive plan proposal. This was in our packet. Do we have a representative from EC cog here tonight?
They are here.
Okay.
Talking to Connie, this was approved already once by the council, this is just more of them. I think they, more of a formal proposal, I guess, that they did a little bit.
So we don't need to take any action on this?
Well, I need approval of it to go forward.
Oh, we do, okay.
I would like approval of it, yeah. So I can start setting it up and getting them here.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the comprehensive plan proposal as submitted in our packets?
Oh, to approve.
John makes a motion, I'll second. We'll do a roll call. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
All right. 5G, discussion regarding live streaming city council meetings.
I requested that this be put on the agenda because although I don't like the Zoom meetings because I think they get clunky and hard to manage, I do wish that we had a way where people could sit at home and watch the meetings. And we're in a digital world, we can figure that out. There's a way that we can stream these meetings on our own channel, on our own YouTube channel or something like that or, I mean, really, if we had to, somebody could sit in the back room and Facebook Live it. We've had that happen and it worked out just great. So we could make that happen for people.
Doesn't the sun have that ability?
Could the sun give us a quote for that service as?
And I was thinking, like, when I was running this through my mind, is that we may even be able to hire, like, a kid from Lisbon Inc. or something to come in on the council meeting nights and livestream for us or something like that and get them involved. It could maybe even be Silver Court hours. There's a lot of possibility.
Does anybody know who the teacher of Lisbon Inc. is?
Do you know who the teacher of Lisbon Inc. is?
Do you know who does?
Yeah, it's, her name's Amanda Zeniszek. Z E N I S K. She just got married, she was Amanda's co-
Oh, okay. Would you see her tomorrow?
I, I can, I can talk to her.
Could you just maybe have her call Jeff or something?
Yeah, I can, I'll be up to school too, so I can, I'll stop in and chat with her. Yep, no, I, I'll go in and chat with her and just have her call Jeff and see if maybe it would be a good possibility because it's great for the kids to have some experience, do that and, yeah.
And if they can't get paid for it, I'm sure the city could donate something to Lisbon Inc. for their time and efforts. I mean, there's a way that we can make that work. That's how it was playing out in my head when I was thinking about it.
Yeah.
Any other discussion regarding the...
So if they call you, you, you work out an agreement and then bring it back to council and we'll approve it.
Oh, okay. All right, so, yeah, when...
Do you want me to re- research any other part?
I mean, you can, there's, in case they come back and say, hey, we've got our semester all planned out, whatever. And I don't know how long, honestly, let's be honest, how long will school actually be in session? So it might not be something that is feasible down the road, but...
If Lisbon Inc. can't do it, then I, I mean, look, I'm sure if we posted it, somebody would pick that up for a couple hours.
Yeah, or our tech company carrier access, if that's who it is, they could set something up.
If you just want something basic, like just a single shot of the room, that's a lot easier.
It could be a camera hung in the corner.
You know, I talked back in my days at the county, where Johnson County, where they actually, somebody came in, they actually, like, produced the meetings, like, and did camera close-ups, those kinds of things.
And I don't know that we need camera close-ups and all that, but I do like it when they move with us because when we were on the Zoom meetings, if you remember, everybody was like, who's saying that? Who is that talking? And they were like, can you say your name? And then we, we all forgot. And so nobody knew who was talking and nobody really kind of, you know, so it would be nice if we had somebody who could...
And there was audio on both sides where they could do public input versus, I mean, and if they're just videotaping it, there's no...
You're not gonna be able to do the two-way audio.
Yeah, the two-way...
No, I don't want the two-way audio. That's why Zoom was such a fiasco. I don't know if you guys remember the night they couldn't hear us.
But there's, here's the thing, guys, is that we're, we're denying people that do not want to go out in public during trying times. We're denying them of allowing them to put any public input in.
You should be able to find...
And so we need to find that two-way communication.
I think if somebody specifically knows that they want to talk about something, they can send a letter. We go through correspondence every week.
Then we need to communicate to them.
Or they could...
We can make sure they can safely get you.
But at least this way, they can keep up to date with what's happening in the city.
Right. It's just, it's a broadcast, it's not a two-way...
Yeah, I'm not personally for the two-way communicating, only for the simple fact that I think that that causes a lot more mess than it's worth. If somebody really has something to say to the council, they could just come.
It would work if we had someone specifically sitting here, running the Zoom meeting, turning people, muting people, turning people on, turning people off, announcing them, whatever. But we don't have that.
Well, until they turn themselves off on mute and just start piping up.
They could do that too.
Travis and John, I don't know if you guys remember, but I was told when they built this building that they wired something up there.
Yeah, I remember us talking about that.
I don't know the details, but I don't know if you two remember when they built this building. I was told they wired something up in here where...
Doug swears that there's microphones right up here.
I know there was some.
There was, that's, there was microphones up there. And I think that if I remember correctly, there's either conduit ran that we can use or they ran coax for cable in there.
Or Cat 5 or something.
I'm pretty sure they did something. The TV there, you can also hook in to, like, if you had Zoom on a computer, you can hook it into the TV so you can see that screen instead of a computer screen too. I know that, that's a possibility, but I just thought there was something that they wired when they built this building.
I think there, I think there is. Either it's Cat 5s up there or I thought they were bringing in something because we had talked about putting some type of TV in here at one point in time. So we might have to look into that.
Well, it sounds like we should probably have Jeff explore options because it sounds like you're in favor of a two-way.
I am in favor of a two-way because if, if, let's say the, the state does shut down again and who knows, I don't know, but we have to be prepared. We, we truly do. And we can't expect them to send a letter in every time, you know. We may not get the letter in time of this meeting and it may be important information that needs to be addressed or whatever. So I only, I just think that there are people out there that probably would come to a meeting or be on a, a two-way. Obviously, it's for public input only and for that amount of time. But I, I, I believe that a two-way communication is the way to go. That's my personal opinion.
So maybe we should have Jeff? I, I'm not in favor of two-way, but...
I'm not either, honestly.
I don't know what you guys want to do. If you want to have him look at all the options or just...
Yeah, we used to have KMVO broadcast it. I don't recall if it was live or not, but...
No, it was all recorded.
It was still recorded.
Well, but there was at one time that there was a live because you could sit at home on MediaCom Channel 12 and watch the council meeting in real time.
That's why we had our own TV station.
Yeah?
Well, we had KMVO, I think, so, yeah.
Yep, and it was real time. I wish, I miss that, actually. So what do you guys want to do? You want Jeff to explore all options?
Jeff's gonna, Jeff's gonna come back with some options. If we want to guide him in the direction that we...
I'll just lay out the costs and the services available, like, here's the bottom end, basic, two highly produced and two-way and all that.
Yeah, and I'd like to hear the, the potential for a two-way. I might not be in support of it right now, but if there is a...
And if there's a way to incorporate Lisbon Inc. into that, I would prefer to go that route, personally.
And they may do it. I mean, they may make that as part of their curriculum, but maybe not. Might, that might be something they have to do next semester or next year, so...
Or maybe they'll switch around if they know the opportunity is there for them.
Could, yeah.
Any further discussion? All right, Jeff, then you'll come back to us at your next, next available opportunity with that, with those proposals. All right. Agenda item 5H, discussion regarding police services. Want to take the lead?
I thought Jeff was gonna take the lead.
Okay.
I've just been having informal conversations with Chris Nosbush and Doug Shannon about, and I think that, talked about, some of the feedback I've gotten from you all about things that are important to you and kind of talked to some of them about it. And I think we're pretty close to being, and we got setback by the weather thing a little bit, but we're gonna meet again tomorrow.
Okay.
And I think at the next meeting, I will have something more concrete in terms of an agreement with Mount Vernon.
Of a potential agreement with Mount Vernon or at least a idea of what it would...
Yeah.
Like a 2080 or...
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
Not necessarily.
Not a 2080.
Well, yeah.
We would be looking at combining departments.
But it's, it's established.
Combining departments?
Yes, that's what, that's what he's looking at. That's what he's exploring, is combining departments.
You know, we already had two different meetings on that very thing and it never went anywhere. Why wasn't any of the council involved in that?
Well, I'm just going by feedback I've gotten, where you wanted to go. Nothing's been drawn up yet.
Okay.
So what Jeff is doing, so how this all started is we were going to have him, well, Nate and I had a discussion with Doug Shannon about expanding our 2080 agreement, our coverage with them, once we no longer had a chief of police and how much time we would need from them and how much they could give. That's how this conversation started. We met with Doug and Chris, and I'm not gonna say his last name because I don't overpronounce it right. But we met with them about adding more time to our current agreement. And it, basically, nothing needed to happen because in our current agreement, if they go over the allotted hours that we already have, it's just so much per hour. So we didn't need to do anything different with that. And then they let us know that about four years ago, I think it was, they said they had talked with the city of Lisbon about combining police departments. And a lot of work was put into it and a lot of effort was put into it. And they met with a couple, maybe mayor and a couple council members or something and it, it never went anywhere. It never came to full council, full council never voted on it after those initial meetings. So we said that we would revisit it, but we needed numbers. I mean, we can't bring it to council unless we know numbers. So we were going to have a meeting with a couple council members from Mount Vernon, a couple council members from Lisbon, the mayors, the administrators. But I asked for that meeting to be canceled because we still didn't have any numbers and it doesn't make any sense to have big meetings like that. I mean, if they come back with a number that's, because what I was told from people who were involved in the last was that the numbers were just too high. It didn't make sense because there was no way that Lisbon could afford the amounts that were said. So I asked for hard numbers before it went any further. And that's what Jeff has been trying to get, is hard numbers to bring back to council to see if it would ever make sense for that to happen. And until we get those hard numbers, I don't think council could make a decision one way or the other.
But there, this, this discussion item's on here, so we have the opportunity to talk about, do we want to hire another chief? Do we want to appoint a interim chief? Do we want to pursue a 2080 agreement with expanded time? Do we want to explore a combined department?
I mean, we gotta do something. We've been sitting here for however long now with nobody really in charge of the police department. Uh, no offense, Nate, I just meant, you know, you know what I mean.
I get what you mean, yeah.
So I guess, what did you think was gonna happen with the police department, Travis?
I don't know right now, but it just seems kind of odd that, you know, all of a sudden, boom, we're, you know, they're talking about joining departments and everything and, you know. The community was not in favor of that four years ago when we sat down with them. I was a part of it. And it all come down to money.
Right.
You know?
Well, and so I'm surprised.
It's always been about the money and it's how much money is it gonna cost us? And we're gonna get shafted with the deal, just so you know.
And I'm surprised because I don't know if you remember the very tense meeting that we had. There was a couple people in the audience that said, you guys better look at combining with Mount Vernon now. And I said, we'll be, we're discussing that. So I'm surprised that you're just now, it sounds like adamantly against it.
Well, I've been against it since the beginning. I don't, I've never wanted to join the forces. It's not, we're getting too big now that we don't need, I mean, we join with Mount Vernon and we're gonna lose. We're gonna lose patrol, we're gonna lose part of that, like, you know, you get, everybody says that, but, you know, they're just not... I don't know, I just, I don't like the idea. I just don't like it, I just, I have a feeling we're gonna get the short end of the stick. And, you know, we've always said, it starts there and what's gonna be next? You know, you're gonna join, you know, public work department, then you're just gonna join everything together, you know. So I'm, I just don't like it. I'm, I'm not in favor of it right now. Unless you can convince me otherwise, I'm not in favor of it.
I think if we can get better service for the citizens at a reasonable price, then I'm in favor of it. And if this is, if it didn't work out, there'd be a severance in that agreement. It wouldn't be that we're locked into this for 10 years. But that's the way I see it anyway. And I think they're a lot closer now, there's different people involved. And I'm the most hopeful now on something happening. But I know there are some people, a lot of people in law enforcement told me, don't ever do that. You'll be the small community, it'll get shorted, but I, I don't necessarily think that's true.
And obviously, I wasn't here four years ago when you guys discussed it and I have not seen any of the data from that, so I have no idea. I'm totally going into this blind and won't know anything. I don't have a feeling on it one way or another until I see all the data. The money has to make sense, the coverage has to make sense. How Lisbon's gonna be represented has to make sense. I've been told it's gonna be a rebranding, you know, to combine both departments and not just be the Mount Vernon Police Department. And we're the, you know, redheaded stepchild over here, you know, like, we're gonna be part of it. So I need to see all of that in order for it to make sense to me. And I don't have, I don't have an opinion one way or another whether I think it would be a good idea as I sit here today, but I'm hoping that once I see the data, I'll have a good idea.
Yeah, I'm still...
And I'm open to it.
And I'm still in an information gathering mode as well. I'm not ready to make a decision. I exactly feel, as John said, if this is an improvement in service at a reasonable price, then I could see myself going in favor of it.
What I do know is that we are sitting here without a police chief, one officer on light duty, a part-time officer, and a full-time officer. And I have not heard from one single council member ever as to how they would like to move forward to fix that problem.
I have a question. Do you, as far as the council, know what needs to happen to run a police department? As far as, so we would need a chief, if we kept things as is, we would need a chief? And then, let's say we're police staffed at them and we're good. Do you know what, what kind of getting a chief would be? And the process of that compared to if we did for whatever reasons decide to combine? That's already there. And they already have, they have more personnel than we do. I guess what I'm saying is, do you know that if you hired a chief that wasn't, if you decided to hire a chief that has not been certified yet, you know, are you gonna send him to the academy?
I would never, ever do that.
No. I mean, we would properly, any person that we would be looking for.
Mechanicsville's doing it right now, yeah. I would never be in favor of that.
No.
So I'm saying, do you know, like, what the process is? Because if there was to be an opening in the police department besides a chief, I call the state academy to see when the next classes would be. There's a waitlist for the 2021 class that serves in August. So even if we were to hire another officer, whether somebody retires or leaves or whatever, there, there's going to be a long period of time before...
You're saying if we hired somebody completely new that didn't have any training?
Yes.
Yeah.
For either chief or if somebody, we're not blaming them, but if something changed and something drastic happened, either Jeff or I left. The idea is that getting another officer is probably going to be a year and a half, two years?
Well, that's what I'm saying is, we've been sitting here, I don't, I can't give you an exact date, but we've been sitting here for a month and a half probably now and nobody's brought up anything about what we're gonna do with our police department. So, yes, I asked Jeff to explore the option of combining with Mount Vernon because nobody else has done anything.
Yeah, and I, and I totally agree. I mean, there are certain things I had to say, well, I can't do this right now because the wording says, pass me the, like, police chief. And so we, you know, pass it on to Jeff and say, would you like to handle this?
And those are our personal ordinances, so until we get a police chief in, it may come down to, I mean, we have to make a decision one way or another or we need to change some ordinances. That's gotta happen in the next short interim time.
Actually, you know, if you guys, council is a whole new what was needed as far as...
Probably some do and some don't, I would guess.
...what, what needs to happen. And I think that there's just a timeline that maybe one doesn't think about, that there would be...
So you'll have something for us next, next meeting or?
Yeah, just so you can, if you decide if you even want to go this way or not, so we can go on. If you don't want to do this and go on with our own department, just trying to move things along. So it's, or the other, yeah. I also, we have the next meeting.
Should we, is there anything we need to prepare if we do choose to look for a new chief?
I'm not gonna have, just so you know, I'm not having an agreement at the next meeting, but I'll have the outlines.
Nope, you'll have an outline of the numbers.
Like an outline with the numbers and the other conditions. Not, I'm not gonna bring up an agreement, plop it on your desk, go here, so it's not gonna be like that.
Because, too, Travis, just so that you know, one of the things that we talked about, I know Nate and I talked about it and I'm pretty sure Jeff was involved in that too. This isn't something that just council would do either. I mean, if we were ever to decide to explore joining, if council got on board and wanted to join with Mount Vernon, we would want to have a public hearing and let the town come in and give their opinion on it as well. I mean, there's a lot, but, but that is all gonna take time and here we sit with nothing going on.
Which is why this is on the agenda, to start something moving. And what Jeff's researching may not be the number one choice of all five council members, but it's progress. We need to continue making progress.
Well, do we need to have him then look at, you know, similar to how we had the city administrative position filled, where we had a consultant come in and, and help us through that process? Is that something that we do again? Maybe look at an interim police chief in, in, while we make that decision, if it's gonna take so long.
Right, that's why I asked. What should we do if we go another direction? Jeff's researching a combined force potentially. But that's one of the three or four options we have.
So do you have...
What else can we prepare on the other options?
Do you have him, see if he can find some consultants? See how, is there, that's a route that we could take as well.
I'll look at the other aspects of it too. I know one of these police consultant works out of Des Moines and some of that stuff.
And just so you know, we have had some people call us when, when Rick left and ask us if we were gonna be filling that position. So there is some interest out there for that position.
Just from the public record?
We might not need to spend money on a consultant if it comes down to the, you know, we decide to hire. We may be, and I'm gonna actually bring this up later, but we may be able to just post
The position.
The position and see what we get before we spend thousands upon thousands of dollars on a consultant. Why are you making that face?
I'm, I'm looking at Amy to see her reaction because she expressed that we may not know the procedure. I would have assumed it was as simple as you just said. It's a job.
It might be and it might not.
We post it and we bring somebody in. Is that something that, is that the procedure?
And honestly, that would be, that would be the easiest way.
Okay.
Big boys, but similar, what I wanted to make sure is that, like in Mechanicsville, their chief is not certified as an officer yet. But similar, what I wanted to make sure is that, like in Mechanicsville, their chief is not certified as an officer yet. So, he can drive around in a car, but that's about the extent of it.
But they could have had a certified chief.
If they had.
If they wanted to.
But if they had wanted to the academy at the same time as being a chief. And so, if you chose, if you didn't get anybody, and all you're doing is hiring, and it came down to there's only a non-certified person that you wanted as chief, just be prepared that that's going to be a 14, 18-month process, just to get them certified. Or four weeks, just to get them certified.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, easiest route, that would make sense to see what, what is the pool. I have no idea.
All right. So, that, that's why I was kind of giving you a look and paying attention, so. I, I like exactly what you said. That's exactly what I was thinking. But if it's, if it's a procedure that we can carry out, um, you know, then that's one of the options.
Well, it is. But I think you, you know, you've got people that already have an interest with joining the department with Mount Vernon. Then I would hate for us to go out and hire this guy as a police chief. And then you guys decide you want to join forces, that would kind of.
Well, you wouldn't do that. You wouldn't hire somebody until you had all of the facts for both ways or whatever.
We are going to decide the direction and based upon the options that Jeff's going to present for us.
I mean, there's five council members, so it's going to be the majority of those five council members that are going to make the decision of how this goes forward.
Along with a public hearing.
Well, if we decide, you don't need a public hearing if you decide to just hire a chief.
Well.
But I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
There'd be a lot of time for public hearing.
Yeah. Like you guys know, and I did attend all those meetings with Mount Vernon, the mayor, the grand mayor of Pro Town. And Rick, he did attend all those meetings. The reason that we were looking at that option of combining forces is because we, we weren't able to keep officers. We would get an officer hired and then they would leave or we'd get rid of them. So, and there wasn't a lot of officers out there to be hired. But the main reason was combining forces would have, would have enabled Lisbon to have 24-hour coverage.
But is my understanding right that the reason you chose not to do it was because it was so expensive?
After we went through several months of discussions, it got to be to the point where the cost to combine was going to be more than what we paid at that time. And the main reason for that was because of the space in the building. We didn't have, we didn't have a facility and they didn't have a facility big enough to house both police departments together. But now that Mount Vernon has their own building, it's, it's a different picture. But one of the main reasons was is because we were losing officers around the block. And it was an option for Lisbon to have 24-hour coverage. Right now, we don't have 24-hour coverage.
And I'm not trying to let any cats out of the bag or anything like that. But initial discussions, it does seem like it is a lot less than what we currently spend on our own police force. Significantly less. Now, whether the final final comes back that way, I don't know. But from what I'm hearing right now, it seems like it's significant enough that we should explore it.
All right. Any further discussion? John?
Just to mention, back a few months ago, we didn't go out and advertise for a new chief until we resolved this problem of whether we might combine. And I think it probably would be a 2080 agreement or at least the previous discussions that the police department would be an individual entity that would contract both with Lisbon and Mount Vernon. That's the way it's done in other places.
Do you think that?
I'm not quite sure of all the exact details yet. I'll have more for you. I have like an outline.
Okay.
And in, I guess it's three weeks when they meet again.
Similar to how the ambulance is, right?
Where it's a separate entity from the city itself, yes.
Yeah.
I think very similar. All right. Anything else? All right, we look forward to that. Jeff, thank you. Item 5I, discussion regarding parental leave policy.
I requested this to be on the agenda, too, because I was shocked that the city doesn't have any kind of family leave or anything like that. And so, I had Jeff look at other cities to kind of see what any of them do. And he brought one back from another city and, um, we looked it over or whatever, but I, this is kind of like a tweaked version. This is even a little different than what I, what you're seeing in your packet is a little different even than what I envisioned. But I guess I'm just trying to get councils' gauge on what you guys think about that. We've never been in this situation before as far as somebody being pregnant. Now, we have had adoptions, but we've never had an actual pregnant officer. And I'm just wanting to know what council's opinions are on.
Yeah. What we have, this draft, this, a good draft, but it could be a little.
And what I actually, um, when I said, because this was me, but I, these numbers are a little different. I actually had them at 60% of the employees' regular rate, and they could supplement the other 40. But if you guys like 70, 30, whatever, I don't care. But I'm just telling you that.
I remembered 70, 30, but okay.
So, whatever you guys.
Just tell me, I'll switch it in here.
Yeah, basically, it's, it's six weeks paid leave, um, then two weeks at 70% of the regular rate of pay. And the employee can make that up with either work or their own banked leave time.
Well, but what I'm saying to you is the six weeks of paid leave is at 60%.
The six, the first six weeks is at 60%?
Correct.
And the last two weeks is at 70%?
There is no two weeks. It's just six weeks at 60%. And I think that he's got it from a different, like, what I proposed.
So, this came in as an example, you proposed 64.
What I proposed was six weeks of paid leave at 60%. And then if the employee wanted to make themselves whole, they would be able to make themselves whole. Now, they'll be able to take another six weeks because that's their right at, at no pay or use their vacation or whatever else. They can take up to 12 weeks. But the city would pay for 60% of six weeks.
Okay, so you're, you're proposing that we change what's in the draft here?
Because there's already something in the employee handbook about family and medical that includes birth and/or need of care for a newborn child.
And what are the terms of that?
On page 16.
I don't have that.
It's family medical leave.
Just normal FMLA?
Yeah.
FMLA.
Right. But they don't get paid for that.
Right. But I, I'm, I'm saying, does that trump this then? And who, who qualifies for that? Who would qualify for that?
Well, any, any mother, anybody who's adopting, anybody who's pregnant.
Fostering? Um, I mean, because.
I don't think fostering.
Fostering wasn't in here, but.
I think only, I don't think it counts as fostering. It only counts when they adopt. And then the father would get two, two weeks at 50%. And then they would be able to supplement their own, you know, they would be able to make themselves whole as well. So, the paternity leave is, is just as I would have it.
Well, the way that.
No, I'm sorry.
The way that, the way that this is written is they will get six weeks of paid leave. And then they can get two weeks at 70%.
That's not the way I would propose it. What I would exactly propose, based off of looking at other maternity, paternity leave policies, is the mother would get six weeks of maternity leave at 60%. And then she could make herself whole if she wanted to. And then, of course, she would be able to take the other six weeks at no pay or on her own vacation if she wanted to. The father would get two weeks at 60%, but there's no other of this two weeks at 50%. It's just the father would get two weeks at 60%. He could make himself whole if he wanted to as well. And then if he chose to take more time again, he would take vacation or unpaid, you know, for FMLA.
Where did we get this draft from?
Do you remember what city it was?
I think it was, so I looked at bigger towns and smaller towns. This was one of the ones in the smaller towns because the big ones were lengthy.
Oh, yeah.
Long type policies. I want to say this was, uh, Tiffin. I think Tiffin.
And then adoptive parents would follow the same thing as the maternity leave. It would be the six, I mean, I don't care what you guys approve. I'll go along with whatever you guys want. If you like the way it looks here, fine. But I think this is a lot because you're now paying these guys for eight weeks of leave.
Do we offer short-term disability?
We're only paying them for six weeks.
Do they, do our employees get short-term disability off the bat? Because that's pretty much what this is. If an FMLA leave, you can take 12 weeks, up to 12 weeks. Short-term disability will cover them up to six weeks with a birth. So, honestly, this might just be a waste of our time. Anybody who has a child with short-term.
The short-term disability was just changed to where you don't have to wait 30 days. Now, it kicks in after eight. You guys revised the policy and paid an extra amount for that policy.
Right. But they're going to take the first eight weeks at no pay or their vacation time because their, their short-term disability does not kick in until after, on day nine. So, the first eight days, they would have to take off with either no pay or they would have to use vacation for that.
But that's normal. That is, that is a normal.
I understand that, but it's also normal for businesses to have a maternity leave. I mean, I.
I've never worked for businesses that had one. And it's always fell under the family.
You absolutely worked for a business that has maternity.
It was all under, you did not get paid unless you have short-term disability.
So, uh, my question would be, with short term, do I expand out all my leave time before I'm able to be paid?
Yes, you do.
I thought it was just eight days of it.
It kicks in after eight days, but you have to use your time first before the short term will. No. You have to use any time that you have on the books before the short term will kick in.
So, that's right.
It's not a good.
Purpose is, like, the, you know, but, one of the cities that I have looked at had said, you know, employees use 15 days of their own time prior to being kicked in for a short-term disability. So, okay, that makes sense because when a parent would come back, if the child was sick, you know, two weeks after they'd come back.
You would have time, yeah.
Or the person would have access to others. So, I totally see, you know, you want to avoid any missed.
FMLA is the same way. You would have to use all of yours, you know.
Full, full, yeah. So, that's what I'm saying. We have the option of short-term disability. And it's great, and it's chicken, and at one ninth day, you know, if they were shortened to 15 days, but I would have to spend, or a parent would have to spend on their own. Other than full 30 days or exhausting everything. Like, I don't know. Hey, it's just looking for a balance of some sort.
I thought Bonnie said we didn't have to use all of our stuff.
Well, the way it reads, you do. Unless she knows something that we don't.
It's our policy, but I thought her, the insurance stuff wasn't. So, I mean, maybe we just have to change our policy.
And that's what I'm thinking is just to change our policy, not necessarily, maybe we pay the first eight days until it kicks in. I mean, we could easily do that. But they're paying for short-term disability.
Well, they're not paying for it, we are.
Well, okay, better yet. Let's, well, let's use something we're paying for.
But I mean, the other caveat to that is if she, if, if a mother uses her short-term disability for a pregnancy and then legitimately has a, something happen that she needs the short-term disability, then she has nothing because she used it for a pregnancy.
No, you can use it, yeah.
You can use it again.
But you only have so much in a year.
No, 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 no. Short-term disability, you're talking FMLA.
I know that FMLA is only 12 weeks.
You only get 12 weeks. But short-term disability is unlimited.
Yeah. She, Bonnie told us that it would be up to 36 months.
Yes. 36 months.
Yes.
And.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean.
Because I know we've had employees before that use the short-term disability and it only paid them like 65.
It's like 65%.
And we allowed them to use their sick time to make up for those extra hours. We've done that, so I would double check with Bonnie.
I mean, that's what we, that's what this would be doing, is paying them and then not making, not forcing them to use their short-term eligibility, but.
I think they're paying for it, they might as well use it.
Well, that's just it. Let's use something that we're paying for.
I, you know, I asked, I think, I thought for the policy discussion, you know, that we've talked about a previous employee, and at the end of his surgery, he said he had to clear out everything before he was able to file. But then it was too late to file because he had been off for too long. He was looking for the policy on, um, you're talking about Tony, when he was still shoulder surgery?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, he had to exhaust everything, but he was then off too long, but he couldn't get the short term?
No.
Or is he? Okay.
Because you're saying you have to come back.
Correct, yeah.
You only have so much time to file it.
Okay. So, I remember that was our discussion of Tony, uh, or that previous employee having to exhaust all, like, once everything was gone, then it could be.
My question is, do they continue to accrue while they're on FL, like, sick time? Do they accrue?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Jeff, have you got all those questions written down? Because, yeah, I'm lost now.
Because you're going to have a lot of questions to answer.
Yeah.
So, are you saying that you don't have to use all of your time for the short term to kick in?
I wasn't in this discussion with the new policy that you guys put in place, so I would check with Bonnie to be sure.
I don't think so. I think Travis is right. I don't think you have to with this new one.
I thought that was the, one of the biggest selling things that we're like, oh, wow.
Because you have to use your sick time for eight days.
Yeah.
Right.
It cut it from 30 to eight, so that was huge because that was a real problem.
I think she kept talking about how if we had a policy, it would trump theirs then.
Yes.
So, if we have a policy that says they have to use it all, that's what we need to change then.
Yes.
Yes. And we do have that policy. We have a, that, that it does all time, it's free exhausted. So, that's what would have to change.
So, we need to get a hold of Bonnie.
So, then let me ask you another question. Does that protect the father?
You guys would have to set a policy saying, except for in the case of maternity.
No, but what I'm saying is, would a father get short-term disability? And would somebody who adopts get short-term disability?
However, he could take FMLA leave.
But that would be unpaid.
Yes.
All right.
Or they would have to use their time.
So, before we draft a new policy or add another employee benefit or whatever, we need to get some questions answered regarding.
How it works with STD.
Our new policy.
With our short-term disability. How it works with FMLA.
And STD, yeah.
All right. So, you've got a lot of questions.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. More than I was thought.
Okay. Fortunately, Nathan's taping this, so maybe you can go back and get all that.
Just go watch the video.
And get those answered.
And then you'll have to figure out something for paternity and adoption if it's not covered.
Well, we still have that part in there. You could take out the paternity part, uh, maternity part, excuse me, and leave the, the part of paternity and adoption still in the policy, so. There's, there's, but there's going to be the same questions, though.
What, what's that, Connie?
Not to throw another wrench in there, but what would you do in the particular case where the mother decides to go back to work after three weeks and the father stays home for 12 weeks to take care of the situation? So, I'm, I'm, I need to confuse you even more, but.
Well, usually, the doctor doesn't release the, the doctor won't release, usually does not release the mother for six weeks.
And after three weeks, the mother would want to go back to work and there was complications with the baby where somebody had to take care of it. And then the father decides to stay home instead of the mother, so I don't know.
Well, he would be covered for a couple of weeks, so in this policy, he'd be covered for a couple of weeks. But otherwise, he'd either have to take vacation or FMLA. I mean, we can't, there's not anything we can do about that.
I think, I think it makes more sense, like you were saying, to do what we have, use short-term.
Right. If, I mean, if you can get it.
Right. And use it, I just, I think.
We need to get clarification.
Yeah.
Of course, I'm exhausting an entire range of leave that I've saved, a person that I've saved for three years, but, you know.
Or having to wait eight days to get anything.
Well, but again, I'm, I'm fine with eight days. I'm kind of, you know, tense. But when it gets to the 30, then it's like, okay, I have to exhaust 30 days of stuff that I've saved.
You have to remember, Amy, I'm, it's great that you're fine with eight days or 10 or 15 or whatever. But this policy is going to be in place for other employees that might not be in that situation where eight days might, you know, be a problem for them.
All right.
I think. Oh, come on.
All right. We're not going to be able to act on anything tonight, clearly. There's nothing to act on in the agenda anyway. But Jeff's going to get some answers to the situations that have come up in all of this discussion. I'd like to see us update this, um, policy or this draft policy to include, what do you think? I mean, I guess we need the answers first before we do this. But you're thinking six weeks, 60%? Two at 60% for paternity and the equivalent of that for the adoptive situation?
Well, the equivalent of the maternity for the adoptive. But if you're not going to have a maternity policy, you can't really.
Then we don't really need it.
Well, you got to have something for adoptive. I would say if you're going to have a policy in place, you have to have it for adoptive.
To allow for adoptive. Okay. All right. So, any more discussion? Jeff, I, you've got a very clear-as-mud.
I have some, I do.
Stuff to do, but, all right. Then, yeah, we'll put this on the next agenda or whenever you're ready for, for the discussion.
CFS.
All right. Moving on to 5J, discussion of possible action regarding NICSIL alerts for residents.
I can tell, yeah.
You want to talk about this?
I, I had talked to Jeff one day at the city hall, um, kind of after disaster, derision, or whatever you want to call it. Spanish word for high winds, beer. I did learn that. Anyways, um, I, and I know there was a lot of people that did not have cell phone service. It was hard to get, but it was spotty. You could still, eventually some, it would take some time to get. But if we could have some kind of way to communicate with the citizens, if there were, you know, an active shooter or any kind of situation that may arise, whether it's a boil order or whatever, citizens could, the community, community could sign up to get a text alert. And I think this is a great way, you know, right now, they, they rely on Facebook page, our Facebook page. That's what we have, right?
Which during the storm, we couldn't get updated at all, really.
And they may not be able to access it anyway. And they may not be able to access it anyway. I had no internet access.
And we couldn't put our website updating either, so.
This, this goes outside of-
This goes outside and this, this is actually another tool. You can actually do Twitter, Facebook. There, there's a lot more to it, but I think it would be, I know Mal Vernon uses it and that's how they will send out messages to all of their citizens. So this is just something that I personally feel that, I mean, we're in 2020 and I think communication is a key, so.
So these are text-based alerts or at least a different communication or-
It's, they sign up for it and it goes to their, like, you get it over your phone. It's a text messaging, you know, system.
Is, is this a, a system we pay for or?
Yes, and I don't know any of the pricing.
So I just, I've tried to call them twice since to get pricing and they've not been able to, they haven't get back to me, which is great.
Right.
Uh, we used it. I think that there's different levels of service. You can go to real basic, just text.
Sure.
Only just some of the stuff you see in this piece I had in the packet, more, more graphic and stuff. But we used M. Bell Pay for texts and mostly for snow emergencies was the big, the number one use of it. But then she said boil orders, things like that.
Yeah, traffic incidents and some, you know, when, when the railroad was closed and nobody really knew that it was, the street was getting closed, you know, once we did find out, a mass text could have gone out.
Water main breaks.
Yes, missing person, hazmat, community events, even severe weather, you know, things, things to that.
It's really easy to join too. I think you just, it's like text, you text your phone to blah, 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 whatever, and you get joined on.
And you don't have to install a new app. You just get text alerts.
That's right.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
But it also sends to emails, you, Facebook, Twitter, different Google alerts. Yeah, it depends on what level you get, I'm sure, but.
I'm trying to get the price. I've been trying.
No, that's fine.
They don't quote it on their website.
No, I know. I looked.
Yeah.
But anyways, that's kind of where I'm at. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I think there was a lot of information that we couldn't get out to people right away. And not saying that if cell phone service is down or spotty, at least we're making effort to get it.
It's another way.
If you can travel, maybe outside your little area, you could have gotten it. I know there was places in town that you could go and all of your emails would come through or, you know, whatever.
That day, I, I was getting stuff at, at work, but I wasn't getting anything here.
Mm-hmm.
Stephanie tried to call me a couple of times, didn't get it.
Right.
Um, but, so, you know, this is still dependent upon the service, you know, most of the services-
Oh, absolutely.
Or battery backup.
The more options you have, the chances are somebody will get something.
Exactly. All right. Well, let's get some pricing then.
As soon as I get pricing, I'll be back with some more concrete.
Put it on the next agenda if you get it. All right. Anything else on that subject, by the way? Okay. 5K. Discussion on possible action, setting public hearing for fiscal year 2021 budget amendment number one for September 14th, 2020.
Well, we, we're going to have this, the actual hearing at the last meeting that got canceled.
Okay.
And so we're just basically resetting that.
Okay.
Setting it for 14th September, the next meeting.
Motion to approve setting the public hearing for September 14th.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Sarah?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Nathan, aye. All right. Item 5L. Discussion on possible action regarding approval of annual financial report for fiscal year 2020. Is this what you handed out, Connie?
Um, I just gave that to you tonight. If you want to take a look at that, it says, state of our financial reports. It shows how the end of the year, how we ended up at the end of the year. You know, halfway down, it says public revenues and other resources were $3,736,953. Expenditures for the year were $3,499,759. So we ended up the year with a little over $300,000 revenues exceeding expenditures. So we ended up good. So it left us a ending balance of $1,718,414, which at the end of the previous year, we were at $1,481,221. So we got a surplus of $300,000 this last year. So it was a good year. We also were able to get the budget done early this year. We did it in July. Usually it's October before we're even going over the budget. But at four o'clock last Friday, I received the draft report from the auditors. And I just wanted to go over that with you guys a little bit, if that's okay.
Mm-hmm.
We had just a few things that we were getting, we got noted on. The first one was segregation of duties. There's no way to avoid this.
It hits us every time.
Every small town gets noted for segregation of duties. They want several different people overlooking all the items on the financial stuff. When you only have Christine and I in the office, of course, we're going to get rid of our segregation of duties. So there's nothing we can do about that. Uh, let's see here. The other one was, um, they made a notation about the money that we took out to give to CDG. And we use that for to supplement small businesses. We had everybody apply for funds and we gave small businesses up because of COVID. They just made a notation that you want to make sure that those public funds are used for a good purpose. We all felt at the time, we all, you know, the council felt at the time that that was going to be used for a good purpose. But they just made a note to make sure that we, we use it for a good purpose. Another one was, just a minor one. When you have a closed session, you have to note on the agenda that you're going into closed session and you have to cite the Iowa code that allows you to go into closed session. Well, you also have to quote that Iowa code site in the minutes too. So the last couple of meetings you guys had, um, didn't have those in there. So I had Christine over, redo those minutes, put that code in there. You guys approved them and those at the last minute, at the last meeting. So we, we corrected that. So that's done over with. There was, the only other one was that we have some funds that are in the negative. We have no choice but to have them in the negative. We borrowed money from ourselves to purchase the property for the sports complex. We're taking money out of multiple sales tax each year to pay that loan back to ourselves. So that fund is going to be in a negative until we, I think we just, we said that for four or five, four or five years, I think. So that's going to be a negative fund. The other one that was a negative fund was the housing rehab fund, which was $10,930. We pay the contractor that does the house, the houses that we rehabbed here in town. We got a branch to do that. So we pay the contractors and then we submit the, the paper, paperwork to the, the state and then they reimburse us for what we paid. So the reimbursement's just happened yet. So that was fine too. And the other one was, um, I think that was the only ones. So we were, we're okay on that. So that was the only things that we were written up about. The things that they found were dispers, dispersments during the year did not exceed the amounts budgeted. During the audit, we did not note any dispersments that did not meet requirements of a public purpose, so we're okay there. Travel expenses, no dispersments, the city money for travel expenses, all the board spouses of the city officials were noted. No business transactions between the city and city officials were noted. No transactions were noted between the city, city officials, city employees in violation of chapter 68B of the Iowa code. Bond coverage, we were okay on that. Council minutes, we just had the one that I told you about. They made the recommendation. We corrected it and it's done. No instances of non-compliance with the deposit and investment provisions of chapter 12B and 12C. Um, no instances of non-compliance with revenue bonds resolutions were noted. Um, so a bit audit once again. So it's done. This is a draft. They will give us a final report and then you guys will get that once it's done.
Thank you, Connie, for taking care of all that.
Thanks, Connie. All right.
Don't we need the approval of the financial, annual financial?
Yes, do you have any motion, second to approve it?
Okay.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Sarah?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
John? Nathan, aye. All right. 5L. Discussion on possible action regarding approval of annual financial report for fiscal year 2020.
That's what she just did.
That's what we just did.
Yeah, streets.
On the streets.
Crack and joint.
I didn't do first, breaking everything off. 5M. Discussion on possible action regarding crack and joint ceiling for, it's in 2020.
Okay.
It's going to take place on 4/20.
Every-
And it takes place on 4/20.
4/20 is passed.
Wow, wow, wow.
All right.
Every year we budget so much money for this along with-
Are you sure?
Yeah, we try.
Okay.
But this year we were warned not to spend as much money because of the COVID and the road use tax. So what we did is, we still want to do the crack ceiling, but we took out any of our chip ceiling that we were going to do because A, we're hoping the water main project, the water main project goes through in most of those streets. I think we had two streets that weren't going to be touched with that project, so it made no sense. Those streets were fine. So I want to know if we can still go ahead and do this. I've talked to Jeff and he said he ran the numbers and we should still be fine to do our normal asphalt repairs that we have to do by the school where we had the water main breaks and where we've had some storm sewers. Obviously, we got a couple more storm sewers to do, so that bid, they were, said was going to be around 20 to do the asphalt part and then the additional 30 for, for this, if we have no more other breaks between now and then.
Yeah, right.
So what this is going to fix is if you go down Main Street, especially the east end, you see where the two joints are pulling apart. The reason this seems a little more expensive is this is a different process other than just putting the tar in there. It's more of a mastic, they call it. It's a wider. It makes it smoother. Your street is a good one on Alexander. The water and sewer is good under there, but we haven't been able to spend money on crack ceiling. Well, now, when the water gets in there, it's creating more of a knuckle and it's more of a speed bump every time you go over them, so.
Does that mean you're going to tear up my street?
No.
Okay, good.
No, it's, uh, it means we're going to try to fix them. And school street's another one.
You say it's, it's raised up?
No, it, they fold.
You get a dump or you get a, you get a dip in it?
Yeah, and then when you hit it, it's like driving over a speed bump.
Okay.
In a pothole. We have, we've tried-
Is that the problem down here by their house?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Because that's really bad.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, we tried cold patch. It won't stay in them. This is what we're getting told to try is this mastic. I've talked to bigger cities. They said they've used it and it's actually saved the street. If we don't do anything, which is an option, we're going to be looking at resurfacing a lot sooner than if we do this.
So it's a total of 30 or?
That's just for the crack.
That's just the crack ceiling.
And so the others 20, so a total of 50?
Yeah, roughly 50.
And you've checked on road use. You even gave us a tax, road use tax analysis.
Yeah, well, that's, and that assumes that we had the decrease that they told us, but what we're seeing is that that hasn't really shown up. I mean, the decrease that they told us you're going to get hasn't shown up in the numbers yet. I mean, I'd be conservative here in showing it, but I don't, so far it hasn't shown yet. And I've got other good news is the sales tax reports have come out in the last two days. Most people are not getting reductions. So, but that's kind of an aside, but I think we're okay with it now. And even if we were reduced, we're still talking about 70% and that assumes everything else is spent. So I think, I, the funds are there to do this.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. We have a second. Sarah?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Nathan, aye. All right. On to the big one. Number 6A. Livestock ordinance review on urban ducks.
Finally, you're up.
Thank you for waiting so patiently.
So what, just to build, it's been a while since we talked about this, but just, I went and got our ordinance here and then he asked me to do some research. And what I did is I actually found-
Found Marion's?
Marion's, which basically is very similar, just added ducks in it.
Yeah, it looks like Marion's.
Chicken ordinance with ducks.
Yeah, it looks like Marion's was just they, they added a couple of definitions, but basically just took the chicken ordinance at the end of it, said, oh yeah, it also applies to ducks too.
Yeah. And I didn't really find any other examples or a whole lot of them out there. Other cities that they allow.
Right. Now, I know, Stephanie, you met with family?
I met the ducks.
You met the ducks?
I met the ducks.
Awesome. I've driven by the ducks several times. I love looking over and seeing them.
I met the ducks and I actually got to watch like how they interact with them and their, kind of their process and what they do. And it was, it was good. And they're, they're no different.
Correct.
I personally did some research myself and I'm okay adding ducks to this ordinance.
Now, I will caution that we are setting a precedent right now and that whenever somebody wants to bring something else, this is the same process we're going to go through.
But we're not, because we're adding poultry to poultry.
I'm not, yeah, we're adding poultry to poultry. We're not adding sheep or, or beef-
You know what I mean?
To poultry. We're adding poultry to poultry, foul to foul.
I mean, a chicken, a duck, whatever. If it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it might be a chicken, but it, they're the same.
There are no more trouble with chickens as far as a nuisance for the community. We'd have to evaluate anybody else's request. Is it going to be as trouble-free as ducks and chickens? I don't see it being a problem.
I, I completely hear what you're saying. We are setting a precedent that this could move on to the next boutique pet. But I also do not have a problem expanding the chicken ordinance to include ducks. Do you guys, have you read the ordinance? Do you see the restrictions in it or requirements in it with regard to like training, certification, permitting, the space of your enclosure? Are you in compliance on all of that at this point? Are you going to be there?
I would have to double check on the space. It's a different matter from chickens and ducks and what they want.
And we can give you a copy of the ordinance just so you guys can kind of go over everything and, and, you know, get your ducks in a row.
Ducks in a row.
No pun intended.
I love you guys.
So can I ask a question?
I just want to ask one real quick question and it's something that I've just been thinking about since, you know, this first thing was brought up. Is you, you know, you said that you did all your research and couldn't find anything on ducks or anything like that. Why did you not come to the city and ask? You know, honestly, didn't occur to me. This is the first time we've really done anything, more than likely even thought about doing something like this and coming to the city council. You know, I'm sorry, we didn't, I guess I didn't really understand that we come to Iowa City and, you know, it's been processed down there. We never had an opportunity to do anything like this. So we're definitely obliged to not come here. I just honestly, it didn't occur to me to do that. I just tried to do the background research and went and fired and took a plot with them.
My, my question was, are you still going to limit the numbers?
Yeah.
So can they have six ducks or if it's a combination of chicken and ducks, it's still six for the combination?
Yeah, it would have-
Ducks do take additional space or space with chickens.
It would have to.
They're not confined to a coop. There's a lot of them around.
No, they're confined. The ducks are confined. They only-
They're currently confined.
They only bring them out three times a day. Otherwise, they're in their little pen, you know, so whatever. But I mean, yeah, you would, you would need to put a, a limit on them. And yeah, if somebody wanted to have both, they would need to have a combination, not to, I mean, you can't have six chicken and six ducks. You know, yeah. So that would all have to be in the ordinance. I guess my question is, I'm not sure that we can change the ordinance to, I mean, can we?
No.
We have to have a public hearing.
I mean, I mean, can we even act on this tonight? Because there's nothing on here about-
We have to, we have to have a public hearing for it, I believe.
I know, but I mean, can we even do that?
I need to have a draft and ordinance, an ordinance. And that I'm not at that phase yet.
And we don't have that.
No, not yet. But I've been waiting to see what happens out of tonight's meeting and then I'll draft it for the next meeting.
I would, I would say proceed. Do we need to make a motion to proceed?
I don't, that's what, I don't think we can because it doesn't say anything about possible action.
There's no action to take until-
Okay. So I would go, proceed to write up.
Okay.
And we'll-
Did you like the, how the Marion ordinance was written? Did you, would you prefer like our current one, just?
I would say our current one, but add ducks.
But you need to have a stipulation in there that a mix and match of or still can't exceed the six.
Yes.
Yep. I will have something for the next meeting.
And then at the next meeting, I guess we'll have to set a public hearing for the next meeting.
Well, you just have to have a reading the next meeting and then how many readings you want to have after that, that's up. Well, you have to have three readings, but how many dates you continue on after that, that's up to you.
Yeah, I'm never in favor of suspending the rules unless it's an emergency situation.
Only for emergency situations.
This isn't an emergency situation because we're not going to make them get rid of their ducks just because it's taking us a little bit more time to change the ordinance.
Great.
Can you give the ordinance, order over to us so we can start working on?
Yeah, yep. In fact, um, can somebody go make him a copy of our ordinance?
Yeah.
Something else on, you know?
Okay.
I was going to, he can, he can email it right to you.
I was gonna, he can, he can email it right to you.
Yeah, I can. No problem. Okay.
All right. We'll look forward to it at the next meeting. All right. Number 6B, possible first reading of ordinance 04-2020, city administrator.
These are the little, the two little tweaks we did out of the discussion. 21033, 21037, so just took a couple little changes to. In other words, I took the exemption for the police out, basically.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion to do the first reading?
So.
We have a motion. I will second. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nathan, aye. All right. Item 6C, resolution, yeah, 44-2020 approving city street financial report for fiscal year 20.
This is the report that we have to do every year that tells the state what we use our road use funds for. It should have been on the desk yet. So, if you want to turn to page three, it's pretty much a summary of what the report shows. We have beginning balance in our road use fund of $76,541. We expensed $284,433 and we had revenues of $313,581. So, in our 110 road use fund, our ending balance for fiscal year 20 was $105,689. So, as you can see, we brought in more money than we actually spent last year. So, we're sitting very, very good in our road use fund. As Jeff said earlier, we did have a couple months, May and June, where instead of taking in about $22,000, what we usually take in for road use, it was down about $12,000 mainly because of COVID. Nobody was traveling. We didn't, people weren't buying gas. So, we did lose some funds there, but the last July and August, they're back up to $22,000. So, it looks like, as Jeff said, that we're, we're coming back to where we should be and we probably should continue to get that same amount. People are driving back and forth somewhere even if they're not going to work, so that looks good. So, we're sitting pretty good in our road use fund. I, if you note on this too, and the general fund streets, many, many years, we've had to use general funds to supplement the road use funds to do what projects and stuff we want to do. This last fiscal year, we did not do that, which is a good thing. That money could be used for other general purposes. So, we had a really good year. Just don't let Travis get happy and spend, I think spend too much on it.
Oh, yeah.
It's always, it's always.
So, I'm glad you approved the crack sealing. It is there. All, all of the reports that I was required to do under my separation agreement have been done. The tip report is the last one that will be on the agenda for next council meeting for you guys to approve. This one is one that needs to be approved by resolution. So, this is, you know, the resolution. If you have any questions for me tonight, speak up now or call me at home or something, but.
Or are you leaving? Or are you gonna stay till the end of the meeting?
I can if you need me to.
Would you?
Okay.
Okay.
So, that's where we are with that and the tip report. Like I said, you'll have it the next meeting. I'll get back to Jeff so he can put it on the agenda. And that report will be similar to this. It'll just say what we use our tip funds from, for. I'm sorry.
All right.
That's that.
All right. Thank you, Connie.
Motion to approve the street report.
We have a motion to approve the street report.
I second the motion.
Sarah has a second. Quick roll call. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nathan, aye.
Once again, thank you, Connie.
All right. 6D, discussion on possible action regarding resolution 45-2020 approving Platteville survey number 2447, adjusting boundaries of part of Lot 1, Lisbon Development Corporation, third edition. Is this Matt Tronson's property?
Yes.
Yeah. We just, again, this was another one we were gonna do. We just had to move forward.
Okay.
This is just, he's just combining the garage parcel back in with the house. That's all that's going on here.
Exactly.
And it's already been approved by planning and design.
Plan and design. So, I'll make, and I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
Sarah seconds. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan, aye. I told Matt that would take less than a minute, so I think it did. All right. 6E, resolution 46-2020 fixing a date for public hearing on proposal to enter into a water revenue loan and disbursement agreement and to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to exceed $480,000.
This is for, we started with E and K. We remember we approved the agreement with them for the new well. This is a, this SRF, this is the planning and design portion of that project. Like I said, that's, 480 is a not to exceed number, so.
Okay.
I don't think we'll be using that on this, but.
Do you want this one for the 7th or the 14th as well?
No, it's, yeah, it should be.
Public hearing?
14, excuse me. Should be September 14th.
I'll make a motion to approve setting the public hearing for the 14th of September.
All righty. Travis seconds. Do we need to do a roll call for this?
Yeah, it'd be good.
Okay. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nathan, aye. All right. Moving on to item 7, correspondence. I see Russ Rasmussen sent us a thank you note.
Yeah, we got a thank you note put in there. It's very nice of him for our workers. Also, I had the cleanup day report is in the correspondence for this year as well as some of the monthly energy production for city halls in there. And then you'll see, I don't know if I, but we got something on the Myers. I don't know if I got them a pack or not of the Myers. On the night, October 9th, they're gonna be evaluating the Farmstead for the historic designation.
For what?
For the, it'd be considered by the State National Register Nomination Committee for nomination of the National Register of Historic Places. And that's gonna happen on October 9th.
But what are they?
It's a virtual meeting.
What are they? Oh, Macamel, okay.
Sorry, they call it Myers Farmstead on here.
Okay. Oh, gotcha. I was like, Myers.
Yeah, yeah, it's not.
Well, I kept thinking Myers Meadow. I always think in Myers Meadow. Sort of like, is that going historical?
That's what they called it in the letter. Myers Farmstead Historic District, I think is what.
Macamel property.
Okay. Anyway, just.
Well, that's good, okay.
So, it is, they did send us that.
Is the storm damage gonna have anything to do with or complicate anything with regard to this historic? I don't know why it would, but.
It's really Italian shirts. I was gonna get into the storm thing next, but the store, the insurance guy came and looked at that.
Okay.
Last week. And that was definitely one of the things because we, besides the damage to those two billions of the entire gazebo was destroyed out there, so. So, all that's on the list of insurance.
And no action to take on that, so. Okay. I guess we'll move on to item 8A, city engineer report. Did.
He does that much.
Send it again?
No, he's just working on the water stuff and he's still waiting on the DOT, so.
Okay. On the DOT for?
Yeah.
Okay. 8B, public works director report.
First, I want to thank, you okay up there?
I'm good.
I want to thank all the citizens that volunteered, picked up more stuff than what they were supposed to. We've only been here 10 years and we haven't seen anything like that from what I've heard from the life of residences. Nobody's seen anything like that. That's been a pretty unique storm for us. We had quite a few contractors that dropped what they were doing to come help us. And, you know, I'd like to thank Dan Clark, Jordans, Amos Builders, Size Tree. I mean, he definitely could have been taking bigger Dollar Trees down than handing us two days to come and get a lot of the emergency hangars and stuff out of there for us. We had a lot of citizens stepping up and I, I couldn't write all the names down to, for all the good people. I do know that I did catch the Montgomerys over there cleaning up city park. They didn't want any recognition. I told them I was gonna give it to them anyways. Our parking recs director pretty much stopped what he was doing and worked with us for chipping the brush and everything, so. There's a lot of good people in this town and I know with this year, it's easy to forget that we do have good people around here and good things do happen, even with the bad, but I just, just want to thank everybody there. With that, our softball field area got hit pretty hard. Concession stand pretty much crushed to lean to. We've lost a couple dugouts over there. There's a couple other dugouts that are on the Diamond Four part that are sketchy and some trees that need to come down. I've talked with Drayton and my opinion is, is it's not safe until we can get over there and get everything cleaned up. I know he has people that want to rent that stuff, but I think with talking to him today, our opinion is that we were gonna kind of get the consensus from you guys, but I feel we close it until we have time to get there and actually get stuff cleaned up. Now, on the prioritize list part of that, we have a lot of trees and stuff we need to address in town area, so I, we also want the guidance from you on how you want us to prioritize that. I mean, there's trees that are marked that need to come down that we need to do it. We are short staffed in public works. We're not gonna get tree services. They're, they're quite busy right now. As soon as I can get our normal tree company in here is gonna be mid to end of next month. And we got him allotted for another couple days, but I also have trees allotted for him to take down at that point too, so.
Do we have those barricaded off right now?
It is caution taped up.
Okay.
We got that done. We just did that today. I, I didn't realize somebody already went over and started cutting trees in the park and I thank them, but that's also a liability that I don't think we want to have as a city. So, at this point, I mean, we still have.
So, on your, on your schedule, where do the parks fall?
I was going and hoping for end of this week to be able to start on the parks. With being short staffed right now, I don't see that until mid next week if we go around. I mean, we have piles that are, I know we asked people to, you know, we were gonna stop on Friday, but, I mean, it's, as you guys drove around, you see those piles are just everywhere and it's gonna create vision issues for people driving and.
And so, basically, at this point, what we've done is we've just put the parks on the back burner.
Yep.
Because we're dealing with so much other stuff.
Right.
And we're still mowing them.
Yep.
Okay. But we just don't have time to clean it all up.
And it's, it's mainly the Macamel property. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Drayton, and in between the baseball field.
And the softball field.
And the softball field is the damage.
And then there is a little bit on Diamond Four.
Diamond Four has a tree that needs to come down that I'm not comfortable with having kids around until we, we can get it down.
And so, are you suggesting that we shut down Macamel?
Yeah.
The softball field?
Yep.
And Diamond Four, but not Diamonds One and Two?
No, I feel we're okay there. We took the, the baseball fence down. Everything looks fine.
We have soccer, so.
Yeah. And that's his, that's, it's basically the club teams that are looking for, to rent these.
Right, gotcha.
We've, we've made it to where we can get the parking recs part, our part operable. Like I said, with help from citizens making sure the city park got back.
Well, I'm totally in favor of closing those.
I am too, if they're.
If they're not a hazard.
Safety hazard, absolutely. And we can't just let, I mean, bless their heart, we've got lots of volunteers in this town that want to step up and get that park ready. You know, we don't have a season coming up, but, but hell, I was one of those guys years ago. But we can't. The liability issue, like you say, is, is too great. And I assume the insurance has already been turned in on like the renting too on the concession stand?
Yeah, he came, like I said, he came, insurance adjuster came last week with Drayton, took into all the various park damages and.
All right, how do we?
Drayton, what did he say?
He said that he had, he was gonna get on Google Earth and look at everything so he'd get the mentions and stuff like that and then he would have to rent a report and send it in. So, I have his card. I got a couple more things I have to send over still. The fence out here, I didn't realize that the backside is also broke. I don't know what this iron, but.
Well, we're, we're waiting to get the number on that.
Those are the only two other things I know of.
And what did happen to the siren? Is it down?
It either got stripped by lightning or a graviton, but it won't.
And that's why nobody's hearing the noon whistle.
Correct. When are they coming? Is it this week?
They're supposed to be here today. I did not hear from him today.
Okay. That one was this week, good.
I mean, the reality is, is that everybody's backed up, so, so Sarah and I are on favor of closing down the parks, I guess. What do you voice?
Yeah, I'm all right.
I mean, I have to.
And we, I don't think you need, I mean, that's his call, probably.
Right.
I don't think you need council approval or any, I mean, I don't think you need a motion or anything.
Well, that's it. We were both walked around them and we wanted to make sure you guys knew what was going on before the phone calls and he put the emails out and the phone calls started coming to you guys. the phone calls started coming to you guys. Um, it's easier to bring it in front of you.
But we're just closing from Diamond One to the east.
Yeah.
The problem with that is though I have a fall, I have fall softball teams that want to play and they can't play on Diamond One.
They can't until we have time to clean it.
So, they're gonna be, they're not gonna be able to play in town. They're gonna have to find something else to do.
And I did call our contractors that we had helping us. Um, when we let them go on Friday, now they're helping in Cedar Rapids. So.
I mean, it's an unfortunate situation. And of course, you know, we don't want to put teams in that situation, but we do have to think about the city and what's best for the city and.
Well, the safety of the players, period. I mean.
And if we can still run our park and rec programs, that should be our priority. And it sounds like we can still run our park and rec programs.
And that's, that's what we, that's what we try to do, so.
Uh, my question, I guess, or I have a question. Have we thought, and I don't know, maybe we can't even do it. I don't know. Maybe it's a short-term solution, but I know we're down at least one guy.
No.
Um, and I don't know how long that's gonna be. Have we thought about trying to bring in some type of contract?
I checked with, uh, with an employee for Cedar Rapids Fire. He normally works one day on, two days off. He's gonna let me know. Um, that's a program I kind of had at other cities is what Waterloo Fire is. If we had worked for them, they would come in and they would work for the city, not as full-time or part-time. It wasn't as needed. Um, so they could come in and help with like snow. If we needed something with snow, we had vacation. Storms like this, they could come in and, um, he's gonna let me know. And that's.
And is this one still doing the city work, or is he back to just full park and rec now?
He's park and rec.
Okay. So he'll be able to keep up with all that?
Yep.
And then we just need to find somebody to, I mean, we'll just have to see how that plays out.
Right.
All right. So you're gonna hang whatever signage you need or put up snow fences or something to close that section of the park?
We have caution tape. I don't know what you want to hear Travis, or that's enough?
Well, we probably should post it to our Facebook page for sure.
Yeah.
And let people know. Put it on your park and rec page. And just make sure everybody's aware that.
Right. We just, I.
And basically, I would say from the batting cages.
Yes, from the.
All the way over to the parking for, for Diamond Four.
Right.
Is how I would maybe word it. Because otherwise, if you just say, you know, bunting field and all that, because the problem is really in between the batting cages and bunting from what I could see.
Right, that's, yep. So, and we're, like I said, we're gonna try to get over there, but we're, we're down. We're short-staffed, so, I mean.
You can only do as much as you can do.
So I just, I mean, want everybody to know.
And by the way, you guys have done a great job.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, my God. Awesome. All right. And you'll let the traveling teams know they can't touch it until further notice. We don't have a defined date. But it is what it is. Okay.
Okay, next thing I want you guys' opinion on.
I'm sick of you. Why are you here?
So, before all this, we were trying to water the baseball field. And the piping underneath of it blew apart. Technically, that's the school's sprinkler system. So, we went to the school and I asked them if they had any money to fix this. And they said with COVID and the construction, they have zero. Um, I don't know where we are with our 10,000 that they give us, but we're gonna be pushing that number to fix. Because all that concrete we put down, we had to rip up most of it around the building to get the water shut off. Um, the only way to fix it, the piping they used to put in there is non-pressurized piping, glued-together piping. It shouldn't have been the piping used to be put in there. Um, how it held this long, I have no idea. But as it, as working with Drayton and stuff, we need a sprinkler there. Um, I would like to, like the city to try to use that 10,000. Um, we're gonna have a company come in and bore a new line.
Shoot the lines and then?
Into the building and then outside of where the concrete area is. So if any of the existing sprinkler stuff breaks, it's gonna break in grass. It's not gonna affect our concrete. Um, it'll blow up in the baseball field instead of underneath the concession stand where, where it went right now.
Um, did we have any maybe discussions with the city about maybe splitting the cost of it and they could pay us back?
That's.
Like we would pay for it and they could pay us back their 5,000?
I just bring this to you guys to get, I talked to Eric Reese and he says that the well's tapped over there. Um, we obviously have a hole open that we need to get sealed at the.
What caused it, do you know?
Yeah, just bad pipe.
Just bad piping?
Yeah, it's, it's Schedule 40 glue-together sewer pipe is what it is.
Okay.
It's, and it was an elbow. It actually blew the back of the elbow off. It wasn't anything, anybody did wrong.
No, I didn't know if it was part of, I didn't know if something caused it to go or whatever, but if it was just bad piping, obviously, it's just worn and torn and tanned.
There was a defect in the elbow because it's gonna break, but it's not stuff that I would have suggested to be put in. So.
Well, maybe Jeff could have a conversation with Pat or somebody and see what they think about either sharing the cost or, I mean, what do you guys think?
Or if we, if we, if we front it, they can make payments to us at some point. I mean, I'm, I'm okay.
Do we use the sprinkler systems ourselves? So maybe we could split it with them?
And that's the thing. The other part is, is I mean, we already went over our money last year when we put all the concrete in. So, I mean, I just feel like each year it's.
Do you have a spending issue?
No, we haven't this year.
So what does that go for? Does that go for lights and water and all that stuff? And does that just go for things that they need? Like, say, we repaired the fences, we repaired the dugouts, we did that kind of stuff. Is that just for that stuff or?
It's for treating the, the side or weed feeds, for all that kind of stuff. It's, it's for all the maintenance that's required to keep that park going.
And so if we have 10,000 from this season that they just played, we still have that $10,000. Is it 10,000?
We get it every May, so we get it every month.
Yeah.
So we should have gotten it May first.
But did that money from May 1st get spent last year? Or we still have that to spend this year? Because May 1st was a lot, you know, that was another fiscal year.
And did they pay us? Because that was three months into COVID.
I can pull a report of what we spent last year, but I don't think, the first year we did this, I think we spent the 10,000, but I don't think we've spent the 10,000 this year.
Ever since. Because I'm just wondering, like, if we have it available or if we would have to wait until May of this year to receive those funds again for this fiscal year, I guess is my question.
Well, it's kind of, it's not really, we have to spend the 10,000 this year. I mean, we, we budget, they, they give us so much, but we can, we can use that whether we have to use it this year or next year, or we might not have any repairs this year, but then next year we might have 20,000.
So if we don't use it, it just sits in an account and it doesn't like roll back into the general fund like everything else? Or what?
Yeah, it does.
It does.
But we could, like I said, we could budget 10,000 this year to spend and not spend it. So next year, we know we, we didn't use it, so we can budget 20,000 next year.
But we don't know if, we know we probably budgeted the 10,000? Or we, I mean, do we automatically budget the 10,000 just because?
I think we have, yes.
Yeah.
Because it's a, it's a revenue and a financial.
Because the first year we did this agreement, we spent a little 10,000. But it's just, no, it's, it, the agreement was to, to use that for all maintenance purposes for that, for the park.
So, since you were kind of part of that agreement, in your mind, is this something that that 10,000 should go to cover? Or is this something that the school should be fixing? Or is this something that we should be splitting with them? Because I wasn't here when you guys made that agreement.
Well, the 10 was also, I, I thought the 10 had part of a, I don't know, part of that was to be used for improving the parking over there as well as, yeah, paying for utilities and all the normal expenses.
Paying for utilities, the lights and everything else, the water and all that.
But there, but there was also, say, 5,000 of that that could have gone toward putting in gravel or, or concrete.
We kind of did 5,000, 5,000. So, part of it was just to lease the fields and the other part was still remaining. So, but like I said, we used the whole, the whole 10,000.
We've already used all of it.
How many years into this are we?
This is our third year, I believe.
And so again, what is your opinion on how that agreement was set up or what it was designed for? Would this be us or them or a combination?
I don't feel that, that like the whole sprinkler system would be, if it's something that we would have to take care of or use anyway, then yeah, um, we would be responsible for it. But since it's something that we put in to, for the, you know, the school put in or whatever, I don't know. I, I think I would try and do the split.
I think that's fair. If, if both groups use it and if they don't have the money, we could maybe front the money and then they could make payments to us.
The purpose would be to maintenance this stuff, not to totally replace.
Replace it.
To install, like, we had to install new stuff. That's not what we intended for. It was to maintenance what is there.
Yeah, if they came to us and said, well, we want a new scoreboard, like, that we wouldn't cover that. I mean, that would be their one.
Or if they wanted to depress.
Well, you want it to, we want it fixed because we need it, right?
I mean, I, I feel that's your.
Going to the, that brings up another thing that I want to mention. The park, the grass in the park is, is it crabgrass, Travis, or water grass? What do they call it?
Both.
But it is, it looks terrible over there. So we, Travis talked to Jordan's Lawn Care and they have the cedar that they can seed underground, which is what we need the sprinklers for. So we can run water while, or after they put that grass seed underground. That would be something we should cover other things.
Right, right.
Because that's something that needs to be done.
Okay, you've done some repairs, but it's not operational right now?
No, we've got the water shut off.
Okay.
And we've got the leak stopped. But it is literally a hole in the ground over there with snow fence around it.
Now, that brings my next question. Should, if we're gonna be shutting down the parks, does that bring us into maybe we should be shutting off on the other side of the concession stand?
No, I mean, it's from the concession stand, so you can start from that side and.
Okay, so it's nobody, nobody's gonna get hurt in that area?
No, no, it's safe. So.
Well, I would say that we get in contact with the school and see if they would split it with us.
I, I am, I'm on that same page. I, I think we both use it and we both should pay for it.
And then to solve your grass issue, I mean, is that in your budget? I mean, it sounds like you have the $10,000 for there and that's what it would be for.
Yeah.
I'd agree that that should come up. But then again, we're probably gonna do Park Two, maybe. I don't know if the park would be included with that, so then I don't know how that would, the park area, it's, uh.
Like the actual playground?
Like the actual playground, because it's.
Yeah, everything west of the dugout. Everything, everything west of concession.
It's in left field of the baseball, high school baseball land, but it's working its way into the park.
Into the park. Gotcha.
And that's gonna be worse than it says.
It's.
Is that something that we need to have treated every year? Did Jordan say anything about that?
Yeah, we do get it treated, so it's not, it's not working.
But it just wasn't in good shape when we.
Started.
We started. So we gotta get the crabgrass out.
We need to be a little bit more aggressive with it, is what we should have.
So we probably need to do one, like, we probably need to, like you're saying, get like serious about it this year.
A little bit more aggressive.
And then keep maintaining it every year after. Because it sounds like we stopped for a couple of years.
Well, because the school is responsible for it, but after Ryan's dis, a lot of the times.
Oh, gotcha. And so now it got bad.
So we've been gradually.
Can we get a quote from Jordan's? Or has he already quoted out?
No, we're gonna sit down and, we're gonna, the, the seeding stuff I'll get a quote for. But as far as the, the treating afterwards, I told him I wanted to talk to him in October, November-ish, before budget, because what we're doing for a treatment is good. But if we're gonna spend the money seeding and stuff, we're gonna wanna do some different treating to maintain.
Sure, okay.
With, but that doesn't solve the problem of all the grass creeping up on the Diamonds. Is that a separate issue?
I'm working on that right now. We already got one Diamond on. I'm gonna do Diamond while I'm not touching the high school diamond, because in our contract, it states that we don't touch anything inside, the lines of, inside the base lines.
So is anybody touching it?
The school does not do anything.
Aren't we out of the season? So we're, we're back on.
We're not responsible. They're responsible, right, they're responsible.
For inside. Infield.
All year long.
All year long.
Well, they.
I thought it was from May 1st through the end of baseball season.
Yeah, but they've, they've requested in the past for us not to touch the inside. So unless that's changed, but that was the original thing. They, they did not want us to do the inside because, because Eric Reese said that we didn't do it correctly and they wanted to handle that. So.
So are they handling it?
Well, why don't we find out if that's what's currently happening?
Say that they need to take care of it or we'll start taking.
Who's the liaison to the school? It's not me.
I am. I can, I can talk to him.
Yeah, I checked with Eric to see what their plan is, because in the past, we, we have a touch to the side. I mean, in a specific way.
And I can talk to him about sharing half and half.
I think that's back to, since then.
I'll reach out to him.
No, this was.
Since then?
Well, yeah.
I'll go visit him in his office tomorrow.
Okay.
But.
But you've got Diamond One under control?
And Diamond Four completely done.
And are you gonna have Diamond One under control?
As soon as I get done.
So you're just wondering about, we're just wondering about the inside, the infield of Diamond Two. About the grass that's growing.
Grass care.
Okay.
We're looking into, Eric was actually helping. We looked into some training classes that we could send Drayton to, but Iowa State kind of offers some of those that we looked into, but with COVID and everything else happening, he didn't give that opportunity to go.
Okay.
And so it's something that you probably should, um, once, once this is done, look into again, because that way, you know, we have somebody that.
Yeah.
So, is someone gonna talk to?
So Sarah's gonna.
I will, I will talk to Hawking and Reese.
Mr. Hawking and Mr. Reese?
And Reese, yes. I will email them and see if I can meet with them tomorrow after I am done with lunch. Because I work in the lunchroom.
All right. Thank you, Sarah.
Yep.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you.
Is that it, Travis?
You got any more?
No, I'm done.
She scared you too much?
So, Drayton, you're gonna, you're gonna.
Don't let Stephanie scare you. If you got more, just.
No, that's, that's.
You're gonna, um, post it on the park and rec page and Christine, you're gonna post it on the city page and we're gonna shut down from the batting cages all the way.
Do we have a map that maybe we could post, like, in circle?
Are the trees safe in the camping area? The, you know what I mean?
No, those, yeah, those are fine.
Okay, so we just got, we gotta knock out from batting cages all the way through Diamond Four.
Yep.
The road there, basically.
Through and including Diamond Four.
Okay. You're gonna post signage, put up, uh, caution tape?
Yep.
And Facebook.
Effective immediately.
Effective immediately. Okay. And you'll take care of shutting off the traveling teams until further notice. All right. Thank you, Travis. Um, Section 8C, Fire Chief's Report. You're not dressed like a fire chief.
He wears many, many hats.
His many uniforms that he wears.
Right, right.
Could you go change quick?
So, August 10th, we have this storm head. As many of you know, um, we had units out doing storm spotting. Uh, once it hit, I think they blew the siren a little three times. They noticed, um, after the second time, the downtown siren was not functioning. Um, so there was a repair crew coming today. There's a contractor we have, it's called Frontline. Um, they were supposed to be here today. I haven't heard the report back. I'm not sure if he was here. I know that they're dealing with some sirens that pay a little bit long. So, um, I'll get up to date with that as soon as I hear from them. Um, we did 30 welfare checks that day, um, just amongst citizens with trees down, houses, cars, you name it. Um, over the span of four days from the time of the call until Friday, uh, we had 80 calls for service that were actually 911 calls. Um, I came down after work on that Monday and obviously the cell phone service was down. So we had several people just coming to the fire station, just asking for, hey, please come check this out. Um, I know that I personally went to 25 residents, um, minimum, checked, talked to people. Um, that expanded in then on Tuesday. Um, I think it was Tuesday we started Myers Meadow, doing welfare checks over there. Uh, did that on Wednesday as well. Um, then went back on Thursday. It's all runs together, so they're with me. But basically, they're getting checked on every day. Um, it's, uh, and they don't have power. It's a pretty scary situation over there. There's not a lot of people that are paying out here. I think a lot of people don't understand that and get that. So, um, they have to be first in their minds when something happens. Um, basically, every day I tried to keep in contact with Travis and Jeff as much as I could to see what needs. I was on EMAs. They've had sometimes three calls a day. Um, you know, just if there was needs that we needed, we could take the EMA. Um, Thursday, I ended up doing a damage assessment through the city. I had 113 buildings that were affected. That's, I shouldn't say that. 113 addresses to include commercial properties that had building damage. That could be a missing shingle to a gutter, to a, a tree collapsing on a house, to a wall, to anything, a residential house. It did not include tree damage. So there was 113 individual addresses. And just in comparison, that's pretty comparable to everybody else in this kind of general area, so.
And that was only residential?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, uh, commercial, too.
That was commercial, okay.
But like, so like, um, O'Hare is out here north of town. There are several buildings. That's one, that counts as one.
Okay.
And then there's a, there's a rating to affected all the way to major, like, is it destroyed, maybe?
Yeah, different categories.
And there, the one down on Main Street, I guess is probably the closest one to destroyed that we have. I don't know if it is or not, but, uh.
But that was the point, was you only had the one destroyed that you would classify as destroyed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, we probably need to upgrade that, because I think it's, it's a little bit of them that, that we do.
Yeah, the rooms, yeah.
So.
I think the tree's still laying on it. I don't think it's been removed.
Coming off Thursday.
Is it?
Um, there, there's just a lot of stuff. I mean, I consider, sorry, Howard, but.
No, thank you.
One thing to consider, just the future, um, I don't know if we need to work with the school or figure out some way to get a generator in southeast of the, of the school. Um, I think if we have a situation like Cedar Rapids is going through, I don't know what we can do with these people. Uh, I know that the South, or the Seeds of Faith Church at one time, I told that generator down. I don't know what else matters with that, but I'm not sure that that would meet the needs of what we would need in a situation like this. So, um, that's something to think about for, for sheltering purposes and to cook up a hot meal, um, stuff like that. Because it was to the point where we were gonna go get food for people at Myers Meadow. I mean, that's, that's, the power didn't go on. That was the next.
Thankfully, we were headed that morning and thankfully the power came on that morning.
And I was in contact with the Lion. Um, obviously Brett works for the Lion. Um, I think I counted 29 phone calls in three days of Brett back at work. Uh, so we were definitely in contact and he kind of gave me the idea of who was coming on next. I was in the fire truck most every evening going around, letting people know, hey, hopefully tomorrow, or hey, you could be on in a couple of hours, just so, you know, everybody wanted to know. So we tried to just be in support for everybody. You know, there wasn't much we could do, but anything we could do to help. Um, I don't know, do you guys have any questions, concerns, complaints? I mean, we tried to do everything we could do.
No, I.
No, I thank you.
Yeah, I think all you guys did a fabulous job of, you know, stepping up at the, you know, in our darkest hour.
I think it's important, you know, I mean, these city guys, they're still, I, I went to Friday night to Cedar Rapids. It's a, it's a disaster up there. And for these guys, to Friday night to Cedar Rapids, it's a, it's a disaster up there and for these guys, you know, to get the streets open for us, you know, we have people out doing that as well, but, you know, the biggest part about this is, you know, there's 55, almost 75 checks that we did, not count Myers Meadow, and these people are out doing this stuff before they've done their own stuff. And it's pretty cool to, pretty cool to see, so we love everybody.
Absolutely. All right. Um, I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you Brandon.
My house on that list.
Yeah, yep. I was just gonna say, there's no police report on the report, so.
So two things that I have to mention. The police department will be participating in the STEP program, which is a traffic enforcement program to limit the number of drunk drivers, speeds, to try to limit fatality crashes, that sort of thing on Iowa roads and highways. That's going to begin on the 21st of August and it will run through September 7th. So you can see extra officers, you can see more state patrol in that area, you might see, um, different hours and, and, um, basically a lot of more traffic stops to make sure that people are being safe while traveling roads of Iowa. But, uh, the second one, golf cart permits, um, they are expired, so they need to be renewed if they haven't already. And the biggest that I'm noticing is, and I know Christina tells these people when they come in to faith, that if you have new golf cart, it needs to be inspected. So if they had a permit last year, but now they bought a very fancy one, that very fancy one needs to be inspected. If it's not, then that permit that they have doesn't count. Um, there's been quite a few that I've seen that I've driven around that don't have everything and then when I ask, who proved this? Well, I just got this last month. Okay, you can't just throw the sticker on it, it has to be approved, so. Ask them if anybody gets a new one, they tell us that we can approve it. Bring it here, I'll walk out to the parking lot and inspect it.
I did update the forms, so that includes the make, model and description of it, so.
Can we also put those forms on our website? Somebody asked me the other day, they're like, is that form on the website? Is there any way we could put the permit form on the website?
We can. It, it's just always been a habit that we want the people to come and do it in person because we want to make sure that we're asking those, them those questions.
Gotcha.
Otherwise they just fill it out.
I didn't know.
They fill it out and go with it and that's it, so.
Okay.
Is there any reason why those expire in June?
Yeah, that seems ridiculous to me. Why aren't they ending?
It was like November, at least in, you know.
The season's over.
Next year.
Maybe it's a good thing because you're driving it and thinking about it in June, so you remember to get it permitted, where in November, you probably wouldn't care, you would wait until June and then you would get it, you know?
It goes with the fiscal year, but I don't know when it started that, doing that, so.
Just seem, it would just seem appropriate to me to just, you get it when you start using it in April or whenever you start.
I have a lot of people that ask for it all the way in March, so, and I don't even have stickers yet, so.
Dog licenses, request that all residents register their dogs, bring proof of vaccines, um, and also to address the issue of at-large prohibited. The chapter reads that at-large prohibited means that a dog outside a person's property must be contained either in a vehicle or by leash. So if you do have a leash lock, you can't just be letting your dog roam the four houses ahead of you while you're out on the walk or running down the street, um, exercising. It also states that electric fences not form of containment. A lot of our electric fences quit working when there was no power and we had a lot of dogs that were running loose during, you know, plus dogs get spooked during storms and they run all over the place. Um, we've had unfortunately a couple of recent dog bites, dog and dog bites, that could have been prevented, um, had they been contained like they were supposed to and not relied on any electric fence or, you know, if they'd just been leashed.
Are you talking about invisible fences?
Yes, sorry.
I was about to clarify that, and it isn't allowed.
Life's soft for electric fences.
Right, that's not an electric.
Just ask Stephanie, she.
We actually do allow electric fences in the city limits. Let me tell you about it. No, I'm kidding.
Um, so, please make sure you've registered your dog. Both of the recent dog bites that we've taken reports on, neither were registered and neither have been updated on the vaccines. So we'll start making sure that, doing whatever possible, you know, if I see somebody and I can stop and ask them or go through the list to see, and if not, I send them a letter or whatever, just bring it in, it's $3.
Is anybody doing nuisances right now?
Yeah, I mean, I've sent out some, I know Jeff's been doing some as well. Um, the last thing I have for you guys, it's just I need, like permission, direction, where would you like to, essentially you know about the price range of what would we sell Humvee for? I don't want to list it too low and then somebody say, well, why didn't you put it up at all? So my, our range is extreme because we have a 1991 American General M998. So the lowest I've seen was less than 5,000, the highest I've seen is 33,000. But those are the ones that have been upgraded, you know, have just been completely rebuilt by some owner. So I need a range so I can get this posted. Hopefully we'll get some bites on it to get rid of it.
What kind of condition is it in?
Has 16,000 miles on it.
Is that good, bad, low for Humvee? I mean, this is, I mean, I don't know anything about a Humvee.
Yeah, because it was.
You always figure it out.
It was a Highway Patrol, it was a Highway Patrol Humvee and they barely used it at 16,000 miles can.
You just want to, like, a reserve on it, right?
Yes, yeah. So we, so in, based on GovDeals, it's, it's all on a bidding, um, and so I can put the bid at a dollar, but I would have a reserve to say, we're not selling it unless we meet this amount. Hopefully it would go higher than that, but.
My gut tells me eight, you're saying 10?
I say 10. I, that's where I was going with, was 10.
Can I plug my husband's earpiece before we?
No kidding, there's 101 bidder.
Yeah, Al's, Al's got these, these wheels going now, he's like.
I'm not helping Sarah.
$10,000 sold.
Uh, the only.
You may not even have to post it. No.
I've seen the.
You're not helping Sarah.
I'm helping Al.
We have a, um, hard top, or I forget what, a hard carbon top, um, whereas some of the other M998s have a removable or a claw, whatever.
Ours is not?
Ours is, ours is not, which also then took away, which seems weird, but, uh, ours are not bulletproof, um, glass, but the frame is.
Okay.
Whatever. But when I tried looking, I looked to see whoever else was selling ones that would be similar, there's a couple other departments, one in Indiana and one in South Carolina that are currently on bid, um, and they're within that range as well. They pretty much just said, here's your mileage, here's what we know, we think it starts, good luck.
But we know ours starts. Actually, I just wrote in that, um, not that long ago.
Yeah, over the summer. Um, so, I mean, and we don't have to add every unit there, because I don't know where this came from or that sort of thing, but I just wanted a direction so I can get it done.
I say, start at 10,000.
So what, 10,000 reserve, 8,000 starting bid, 10,000 starting bid?
Well, I don't think she needs a starting bid if she puts the reserve in, right?
Well, we can, we can make more money than we think. If we, I mean, if we want to bidding more.
I know, but I'm saying she, she doesn't need a starting bid, she just needs to know that we won't take less than 10,000.
Yeah. That's where I would go.
Okay.
John or Travis?
I have no opinion, I don't know anything about it.
I, either do I, but I'm thinking it's a vehicle with 16,000 doll, or 16,000 miles on it.
When I, when I did my research, 10, I figured this thing would probably sell for around 10 to 12. Um, that's just, I did, I went to GovDeals as well, looked, looked around there. I know ours is in excellent condition. I striped it and I got to drive it a couple years ago, so yeah, it's great unit.
I did no research and I know nothing.
Okay, so I will say it will be listed tomorrow.
Okay.
Al, did you hear that?
Probably have to come back to work.
It's gonna be listed tomorrow.
All righty, is that all?
We're gonna, we're gonna start Uber this.
Thank you.
Okay, city administration?
Yes, 8D, city administration.
Yeah, so, so far, uh, the bills we paid, we have $40,000 in costs for the storm of, that's mostly contractors, and we have $3,600 in overtime. And now we will be making reimbursement claim as much as we can to, uh, P. Musson, Lynn County got declared an area, so we should be on the roll to that, so we still have some coming in. We haven't gotten size yet, um, and one or two others maybe, but.
Is overtime done?
Well, I mean, for the most part, unless you want us to keep going. Um, I mean, we cut it off in July, Friday, for, that's when we cut off the, the main or the brush. We're gonna try to do this as cost effective as possible.
Are you guys caught up on your other stuff? Like what, or how far behind are you on your other?
I mean, we've been behind since we had to go two guys on, two guys off for COVID.
Yeah.
I was telling Jeff, we haven't, we haven't touched any fire hydrant flushing, we haven't done any valve exercising, the sewer plant's been pretty much, so it's just.
Well, it just got cleaned with all that soap.
Yeah, it's right. But, uh, I mean, that's, uh, we gotta get ready for, for sludge hauling that we haven't even tried yet down there.
I mean, at least you didn't have sauerkraut aids.
Right. Um, we still have some street painting that we haven't got done, we've got a good start on it. Um, there's, we didn't, we didn't need this by any means, so. Nobody did, but.
Well, I just want to know if you're ready for the blizzard that's coming on September 30th.
And I heard too.
What did your child do?
Just 120 inches of snow, no big deal. We're gonna need that Humvee though. So don't get rid of it quite yet.
Right.
All right, we hijacked your report Jeff, I'm sorry. Go right.
That was really all I wanted to tell you, is that's the numbers so far. Uh, we'll see, and like I said, we're gonna reimburse, we'll get back everything we can. We're tracking it all, so.
Okay.
Get back what we can.
Thank you.
All right, 8E Mayor's Report. Um, I of course want to just thank everybody, I know we've already heard this before, but thank everybody for stepping up during the storm, the city workers, um, Brandon, police, fire department, all the subcontractors we hired, the, um, you went through the list, Travis. Um, I think everybody did a fantastic job and Lisbon was back to near 100%. I won't say we're 100%, but 80% wherever we're at, a lot faster than a lot of other communities. Um, also giant thanks to Stephanie, Sarah, um, the people who've stepped up to, you know, make sure the people at Myers Meadow were taken care of, um, checked on and, and food. Um, I was part of the, the Wednesday food handout, but I understand some, um, other people stepped up and made made rights Monday night, Tuesday night, um, Hills Bank, I think, fed you guys for a couple of.
So did those two.
And these guys did, yep.
I forgot to thank those two guys.
Yeah, these guys really, really stepped up from, from day one at the, the day of that storm and, and I appreciate what you guys have done very, very much. Um, other than storm, um, Nick Walton hit me Wednesday night, he, we were talking about a drainage situation on that alley and I thought it was gonna be on the agenda. I did review the agenda this week, but, um.
Dave's looked at it.
Yeah.
After that, yes, where he's looking at it.
Okay.
He's pulling up numbers. Um, that's, I guess I should have, I forgot, he, we talked about it, he has seen it, he's working on it.
Lots have been stuff going on, so overlooking that.
That's right, coming near agenda, near you, I'm coming.
Yeah, coming to the agenda.
Near you, yep, very soon.
So yeah, okay, Dave's working on it, you'll have something.
I took him over there that night.
Okay.
So we've, we've met over there, he's shooting it up and you're gonna have different options to look at over there.
All right, I appreciate that, yeah, I, Nick came down to the, to the, um, Full Fork Night and, um, he just asked me about it and I said, yes, I know that we're looking into it, so glad you didn't make a liar out of me. Um, and I think that's really all I have. John, I think I also thank you for, or maybe you or Southeast Lynn for getting the food handed out.
Uh, it's all Southeast Lynn, my wife and I do the behind the scenes.
Okay.
Looking for that.
All right.
Other, it's been going well and, uh, there are a lot of people in the county that are going out there. So there's still food available for me and I.
I was just gonna say, do they need more food down there? I mean, are they looking for more donations? Cause I'm sure that a lot of people came and took, but are they?
I talked to Nicole about that.
I have Nicole's number, I'll call her, I, I've got some things that I can donate, so.
Probably worth noting that Hills Bank gave them a $10,000 donation.
Yes.
Wow.
Just a couple days ago, so that's a big deal.
I was.
And that will help a lot of people.
Yeah.
Thank you Hills Bank.
Hills Bank, um, I, I mean, I know we had a lot of people, but they really did step up in the storm and they contributed to a lot of different things, so if you see anybody who works there, associated with it, whatever, they, they really did do a lot.
Amazing. All righty, well, let's move on to 8F, council reports. John, go ahead, you already started, right?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone that helped to, to clean up, to far too many people that left. And Jeff, I have a question. Uh, the CDG had $2,500 they wanted to put up as a second prize for the Be Lisbon contest that we go to Lisbon. And, and it's money that was donated to help through the COVID period and it was money left over that belongs to Lisbon and the business improvement wanted to use it as a second prize for the Be Lisbon, but evidently we don't need to vote on that since.
If it's just to inform.
Yeah, so, uh, we're gonna be doing that, so there'll be a second place winner as well as a first place winner this time. All businesses in Lisbon are eligible to file for that. I think it's only something like $25, 25% match on that, so it's a pretty good deal for anybody that's got a project they want to improve their business.
Okay.
I did distribute, um, the forms last week to all the businesses and the ones that I didn't catch, I mailed, so all the businesses should have the application and the information, so if anybody does not, if you've talked to any business that didn't get one, let me or Jeff know and we'll make sure they get an application.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you John. Uh, Travis?
Um, thanks to everybody, um, the hard work getting the trees picked up, I was shocked by, by how fast it, it did get cleaned up really, really quick. I was amazed by the amount of people in the community that just stopped and helped. Trying to cut up a tree at, at my mom and dad's house and we just had people, just from Mount Vernon came over, 15 people, they actually went to Peterson's Cross Street, they came over and helped cut up that tree for my mom and dad.
That's awesome.
And it was great, it was a true show of community and, you know, if you had an opportunity to experience that, it was very humbling to me and I'm grateful for everybody who did things like that. I don't want anybody to forget that we need to be looking at what we can do to get out to the interchange, either by services or annexation, we need to keep that always going, working to improve that part of it. Uh, school's in session, so keep an eye open for kids, they're gonna be running and doing, uh, they've been cooped up all year for over six months, they're ready to, to get out, so uh, make sure you keep your eye open for those guys.
All right, thank you Travis.
Um, I, I'd like to name every single person off to thank them, but I'm not gonna, so I'll start with the fire department, police department, thank you guys and your, your crews for helping out, city workers, um, thank you. You guys have done an amazing job along with Drayton, he stepped up and really showed the community, um, there was a lot of, at a previous meeting, I think this, now he can kind of show everybody what he's, he's capable of doing, so, um, so thank you guys. Um, I know he listed a whole bunch of people. Steph Camberling, um, she really helped out through the first, that first week when everybody was kind of clueless, we didn't know what really to do, I mean, her and I kind of, she kind of took head and I just kind of followed along and, and did what we needed to do. Um, thank you Connie, I don't, I don't know, you'll probably be at next meeting maybe, will you be at the next meeting?
She's gotta do her TIP report.
The TIP report?
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna tell you, thank you for everything you've done for the community of Lisbon, um, and I, you will, you will be missed and, um, thank you for all the years that you've put in and all the hard work. Um, and thanks to all the numerous volunteers that came together, I mean, you can, you could drive down the street and look at all of these people just volunteer, I mean, all my kids, I didn't even tell them to do anything, but that minute that, that storm was over, they were down at Stute Park and maybe it had something to do with, they're related to the Stute, but they, they went, you don't have to thank them, they went right down to Stute Park and pulled every single branch up close to the, to the, to the parking lot that they could, so that the city workers didn't have to, because it was one less thing they didn't have to do. So, and just, just watching, just my street alone, like Travis said, I mean, Jim Schultz went and got my, my east bout, which was a block down, it was almost to Stute Park. So I mean, it was just, it was so great to see people come together in a time that we needed to, after, you know, there's such bad things that go on, but there's such good things, so I, I think that's important to know, so that's all I got.
Thank you.
Yep.
Stephanie?
Well, obviously I want to thank everybody too. Well, obviously, I want to thank everybody, too. This was something we've never seen before, and as most of you in this room know, my feelings about humanity over the last few months have really started to falter, and I really started to question humans. But this storm actually really has restored my faith in humanity and the good people that are out there. And I was really impressed just with everybody. I can't say enough about our city guys and what they did. Brandon was amazing. Every time I needed something, wanted something, had a question, he answered it or found the answer for me and just really stepped up. I just, everything was amazing, and just the people. I mean, I've never, the people are so grateful, and they're so thankful for the way that we did handle this, and I think that that's something for us to really be proud of, because I'm, I'm watching on social media and I'm seeing that, you know, other cities didn't, didn't do such a great job, and we did. And we should be proud of that, and I, I am proud of that. Sarah was amazing and helped me so much, and she just went above and beyond as well. And I couldn't have done, you know, we, as a city, couldn't have done some of the things that we did without her, so I really do appreciate that. I do think, however, having said that, I think we had a great response, and I think we did well. I think that we need to have something in place. I think we need a plan. And I think we could have done better. I, I personally didn't even think about it until Tuesday afternoon, and then by the time I realized that nobody was doing anything, I was like, oh, my gosh, we really, not, and not those guys, but like as a city, I mean, you know, typically, this would have been opened up for people to come in and do their thing or whatever, and it was kind of an afterthought. We did have people from Myers Meadow came in, they needed to charge their life alerts and their oxygen things, and that's the kind of stuff that you don't think about. You don't, you know, Brandon's mentioning that those people over at Myers Meadow, when this happens, they're, they're in trouble. They are. They have no generators over there, so they have nothing, and they all had to throw out all of their food. I mean, those people get paid once a month, so when they have to throw out all their food, they are stuck until they get their next check at the beginning of the next month, you know, and, and it's a problem. And I, in hindsight, you know, I wish that we would have had like a meeting with all the department heads or something and got everybody on par with what everybody was doing, and like, I just would like to have a plan because I think there's things that we need, the generator at the school or Southeastland, that we're not thinking about right now, and it's just like me. I don't personally own a generator, and every time this happens, I say, I'm going to buy a generator. Before the next one comes, I'm buying a generator. And then guess what? The next one comes, and I still don't have a generator, and I'm cussing Doug up one side and down the other, because I'm like, we were going to do this, and we didn't do it. I did order two. We have generators coming now, but we didn't. And so, I, in the city, I think, you know, I do think Brandon's the head of the EMA. You know, we've got Travis in the Public Works, and we've got our administrator, and I think that we should put together a plan, so that we, next time, this is A, B, C, D, you know, this is what we do.
Right.
Are you talking like a contingency?
Yeah.
I mean, yes, that, and just what do we need? We need a generator somewhere. We need to make that a priority. If, if that is something that our EMA director is telling us that we need a generator somewhere, that needs to be a priority for this town, to figure out how we're going to make that happen. Because he is right. Those folks over at Myers Meadow, one more day, and we would have had some problems over there.
Do they have a community building over there?
They do, but there's, there's no generator.
No generator. Didn't work. No generator at all, because, you know, that could be a.
But that, both, they have two community.
It's probably not built for that.
No. They have two community buildings. One's very, very small, the other one is a little bit bigger. But what Brandon is saying, I mean, even the trailer court, I mean, there's a lot of places where this comes into play. I think what you're saying is we need a place that's big and can cook. I mean, we need someplace that we can generate food and store people.
I was going to house 25 Wyman at our facility.
I thought at one time the school was the shelter. Is it not that anymore?
Well, it was, but then we had the ice going, and then we needed, we didn't have power. And then they're talking about, you know, around the old part of the school, and it was going to be too much money, and then they had the seed to faith thing come about, but I still don't. Travis, is that generator not working or?
It's, it did go down during this, so it went down on the last day, so I'm waiting for part.
I don't know if that's, in this situation, I don't know that that would be big enough, but.
Not, probably not in this situation.
If, if this, if this is a South West Cedar Rapids here, we, I mean, I don't know that the school would be big enough. But the fact of the matter is, if there's somehow to figure something out, I'll look for grants through FEMA or anything like that to try and, try and get something like that, but. The biggest hurdle, that whole two days, was cell coverage.
Yeah.
You couldn't.
Just couldn't communicate.
To communicate, and that's another thing.
Because we, we asked about that, because I couldn't get in touch with Nate. Every time I tried to call Nate, it went to voicemail. Nobody could get in touch with Nate, and, you know.
I know.
If you did, you had 15 seconds.
Yeah, literally, yeah. And we had, we had walkie-talkies here that should have, in my opinion, been distributed to council and mayor. We apparently have a secure channel that we own, and we could have communicated with each other on that channel. And that's something that, you know, like, maybe next time, if we had something in place, maybe next time, we would just automatically know that, hey, if this happens and we're out of power, and you're on the city council, or you're the mayor, or you're whatever, you bring your butt to city hall and you pick one up, because that's how we're going to communicate as a town to make decisions. Because there were decisions that needed to be made, and not necessarily always somebody to make them.
Couldn't reach, yeah.
Yeah. So, anyway, thank you all so much for whatever you did as part of the storm. I'm not mentioning names either, because there were so many people that I would never be able to remember them. The other thing I would like to mention is Jeff is headed to month three of his six-month contract, and I don't want to be sitting here in November, December, and going, what are we doing? And I assume, and somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, this job has to be posted, because he was hired as an interim. And so, I would like to, I would, I would like some guidance from you guys to see if you guys are on the same page with me. I don't want to post it through, I don't want to use the consultant. Maybe Jeff's going to reapply for the job. Maybe Jeff really loves it here and wants to stay. I don't know. But what my suggestion would be is to have Connie create a posting for the city administrator job with kind of the guideline as to what the duties are going to be for the city administrator, because we've never, we, again, are sitting here with, we have a city administrator, we have a clerk, and we're going to have a utility billing clerk, and I'll get to that in a minute. But we have never created specific job descriptions for those three positions, as we're now making them three instead of two. So, I think we need to.
Did we?
Yeah, we do.
I thought we had one time.
Yeah, we have. We have.
Let's go back about eight, 10 years, and I'll bet we could find one.
If you have it from eight or 10 years ago, you mean where we divided the three jobs and, the two jobs into three?
Well, before they got ready, Nancy, we had three people.
We had three. We had Tanya, Nancy.
So, do you guys still have that?
That'd be me.
Because weren't you guys going to be trying to work on that?
There are some from way back then, yeah.
And are they still relevant?
Well, just updated, but.
Probably some.
So.
They got to be pretty close.
So, we need those, because we've got these three positions now. And so, if Connie could pull those and find out what the administrator's position was.
She sent the city administrator and the clerk position to us, the city clerk.
Or the utility billing clerk.
Yeah.
So, if you, so if we can have Connie create a posting and post for the next three weeks or a month or something that we're looking for a city administrator, and just see if we get applicants, and then go from there, and if, if something happens and we don't get any applicants, then we can look back at the consultant, but we have to post it anyway. So, let's try, let's try to do it on our own first. And maybe we'll be able to fill it without having to go through a consultant. Does, I mean, do you guys like that?
Sounds like a plan.
Travis?
Sound good?
So, Connie, would you mind creating a posting for that, and then posting it wherever it is that you would post that? And I, how long do you, I don't know, can we even talk about this? How long do you want to run it?
Our policy is at least two weeks, but in this case, I would probably do it more.
I would say a month, and we have time, so see what we get in a month, and if something happens and we, you know, if, if the end of October rolls around and we don't have something in place, then we could call the consultant, but I think we might be able to handle it this way and save us a lot of money. And then the other thing is, we are going to start interviews for the utility billing clerk next, well, either late this week or beginning of next week, so we'll be bringing back a recommendation. Personnel will be bringing back a recommendation.
How many applicants have we gotten?
11.
Wow.
And we did meet earlier and narrowed it down to three that we're going to interview, between Jeff and Christina and John and myself looking at them. There's going to be three that are going to be interviewed.
Good.
All right. Anything else?
Is there anything else? I think that's it. Can you think of anything, Jeff, that I left out? No? I think that's it.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Nine, new business. Do you have any new business? Okay. All right, meeting adjourned.